Anyone wants to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a couple of announcements this evening. The new Vietnam Veterans Memorial Plaque has arrived here at the municipal center. Once the plaque is installed, the Veterans Advisory Committee will host a dedication event. The Grafton Recreation will host their Fall Festival on Sunday, October 20th, from 11 until 2:00 at the Common with Pumpkin Painting, a Scarecrow Building Competition, music, food trucks, inflatables, activities, fun with local businesses, and more. The municipal center's friendly trick-or-treating will begin at 3:00 PM on Wednesday, October 30th. All are welcome and costumes are encouraged. Start at the front door tent for a bag and a map. Can't believe we're talking about Halloween already. I haven't even started to buy candy yet. The Grafton Land Trust's annual dinner meeting will be held at Highfields Country Club on Friday, November 8th at 5:30 PM. Molly Cardoza of the Blackstone River Valley National Heritage Corridor will be the guest speaker this year. Tickets can be purchased at www.graftonland.org. Okay, so we will start with the public hearing.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Mr. Allen.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that an application has been made by Akim Kumar Patel, 87 Worcester LLC Doing Businesses Shell, for a retail package store wine and malt beverage license. The premise to be licensed is located at 87 Worcester Street, North Grafton, Massachusetts, 01536. Premise consists of 1,710 square feet in a freestanding building with convenience store and gas station. There is one floor with two rooms. The business currently sells Massachusetts State Lottery, convenience store items, and gasoline. Upon this application, the Grafton Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 1, 2024, in Conference Room A of the Grafton Municipal Center at 30 Providence Road. Remote part meeting participation will be available, and the Zoom link will be posted on October 1, 2024, on the October 1, 2024 Select Board Agenda. The meeting begins at 7:00 PM. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for public comment.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Okay, so do we have the applicant? Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah, never mind. All in favor, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Sometimes I skip over things. Okay, so we are all set, and do we have someone here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, Board members, Madam Chairperson. Attorney Kevin Quinlan representing the applicant, 87 Worcester LLC. As stated, the applicant seeking a retail package store wine and malt beverage license to sell beer and wine at an ongoing gas station convenience store known as 87 Worcester Street Shell Station here in town. The registered agent with the Secretary of State is Mr. Niraj Patel, who is also the manager, as required in Paragraph 9, Section 2 of the Town of Grafton Rules and Regulations for holders of alcoholic beverage licenses in the Town of Grafton. The gentleman is seated in the back. As required, he is a U.S. citizen, and he will not be absentee manager. Rather, he will be heavily involved in the day-to-day management of the business. He manages four other stores locally, including one across the street from my office at the intersection of Route 16 and Route 122 in Oxbridge, and he lives in Oxbridge, only a few miles down the road from here. He has also clean criminal records, specifically no felony convictions. He reports to me no violations of liquor laws or regulations under his watch at any of the stores he manages. The owners of the business are Vushank K. Patel, who lives in Great Barrington, Massachusetts. He's participating tonight remotely, I understand, and Kit Kumar Patel, who lives in Rhode Island and is a business partner of Mr. Niraj Patel. Those individuals that I just mentioned own about 75 stores in New England and Minnesota. They also report to me that they've had no violation of liquor laws and respectfully suggest that the Shell Corporation would not do business with them if they did have a bad track record with respect to alcohol sales. Mr. Patel, the manager, is tip-certified, ensures me that all the employees will be, as is, of course, required. The lease for the premises that was submitted as part of the application shows that there is a requirement, among other things, that no advertisements at the business can have the sale of alcohol as the primary dominant feature of the advertisement. Their store is also required to carry $3 million per occurrence liquor law liability insurance and is expressly required to comply with all federal, state, local laws and regulations. I'd also note that Schedule E of their lease require states that if at any time the landlord determines that the sale of beer, wine, or other alcoholic beverages is detrimental to the interest of the public, the sales of motor-fueled products at the service station or to the image, reputation, or business of the landlord or its supplier, then the landlord shall be entitled to require the tenant to immediately terminate the sale of beer, wine, or other alcoholic beverages at the premises. So certainly would be in their interests to abide by the liquor laws. It would be financially disastrous were they to become, find themselves in violation thereof. In fact, to that end, Mr. Patel assures me that at the store, they will have all beer and wine under locking key, and no one will even be able to open the cooler door until they've presented an ID, at which point the clerk will be able to electronically remotely open the locking mechanism. Then the person can grab the items and take them to the register to pay. The applicant's not seeking the creation of a new liquor license based on population, but just merely to use an existing license, and I'm told, although I don't know personally, that the nearest seller of alcohol in the town is approximately half mile away. So, given the foregoing, the applicant does respectfully request that the board approves its application. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Kevin Quinlan.
Kevin, thanks. No questions or comments?
Just one for the owner or the manager of the store.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, good, Niraj Patel.
Good, good, yes. So you're going to be onsite managing the store?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. And you've obviously done this before by the description that the attorney gave.
Yes, sir.
How you manage other properties. I don't know if you own, do you currently sell liquor in the Town of Grafton, or this will be the first location?
Oh, in the Grafton, yeah. We just bought this location three months ago.
Okay, all right. So I just want to give you a heads up. Sounds like you have a pretty good system as far as controlling.
Yes, sir.
Sales to minors. Our police department has got a long history of random sting operations that they run, so that will be happening at some point. So just want to give you a heads up to that, and please do not sell to minors because if you, if you do and they catch you in that sting, you will be back here, and it will be a much different conversation. So that's kind of your heads up to that, okay?
And our all location, we are not selling the small stuff like the small wine and everything. So we just like keep the, all the beers in the containers and everything. And all the times we just like put in the refrigerator, nothing on the shelf, never.
Just make sure that they have proper identification if you're selling to them. That's it for me.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Any public, anyone from the public?
Thank you.
Lydia Bogar, Apronard Road. I have lived in that neighborhood for, as of next week, 53 years. I don't see any need for another license in this area. Even an old lady like I am can walk to the other establishment probably in five minutes or less. Most notably, and Dave Robbins may remember, a while ago, before there was Unibank, there used to be Tasty Pizza. And the board, I think Frank was on, I'm not sure, it's quite a while ago, they denied a beer and wine license for Tasty Pizza. So I don't see what circumstance, in the neighborhood especially, have changed that you should be granting these people a license. Is that it?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lydia.
How many, beer and wine is a different name, right, of the license? How many do we have available to the town?
So the town in total has five. We've issued two, so that means you have three left.
Okay.
That's for the beer and wine.
Correct.
That's not full liquor license.
Correct.
And how about that? We have three of those?
Hold on for one second.
I think it's three.
Yeah, I just ran the, so on-premise retail, you have allowed alcoholic beverage is 20, and we've issued 12.
Just a comment, I guess, to Lydia's, you know, position on this.
Sorry, Craig.
Go right ahead.
If we're looking at licenses the same, but with full liquor, we have a total of four, and we've issued four. So for like a package store that does full alcohol.
Right.
We've issued all of those.
Okay.
We have three available of just beer and wine.
Okay, great.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no, no. And I understand that there's one down the street, but if we have an inventory of them and they meet a criteria for that, and there's zone for that, you know, it's difficult to just refuse to give them the ability to sell beer and wine for no other reason that, you know, other than there's one other one in the neighborhood. So it's a tough position, I think, for us to take as a board. You don't have a legitimate reason for denying it.
Yeah, I agree with you, Craig. We have them to give. This gentleman has demonstrated that he's doing this elsewhere and is in good standing, so not sure how we could deny that. Anything else from the board?
Madam Chair. Yeah, I agree with Craig. To me, you know, we want to be supporting our local businesses and their expansion, you know, and this is an opportunity for this business owner to, you know, potentially grow their profits and be more successful. For me, this too is a convenience thing. You know, there's definitely something to be sad for being able to just pick up the alcohol that you want where you're at, like as you're filling the car up, so, yeah, I just, I support the application.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Allen.
I move the board vote to approve a package store wine and malt beverage license for 87 Worcester LLC Doing Businesses Shell at 87 Worcester Street and to sign the Licensing Authority certification.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. We're just going to take two things out of order, provided that we have folks here. I know that Larry, so we're going to try to do ZBA appointment, and then we'll go into the planning board appointment, if that's okay with the folks involved in the first three, if they don't mind. So Brian is here, or, okay, yep. And I know that Larry was going, we met Brian and Larry last time, and Larry's not here, but he did send in a correspondent. So we'll go through the ZBA, and then we can move on to planning, and then we'll go back to 2A.
Yeah.
Hi, Brian.
Hi. So Brian Langivan for Millstone Drive. Like you mentioned, I think we've done this a couple of times for different appointments previously. Not a lot more to add from my side, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
I think your letter said you prefer ZBA.
Yeah, I mean, that's really the tiebreaker there was not having to deal with a conflict on Election Day as an election worker, but happy to serve on either.
And, oh, sorry, any other questions or comments? All right, thanks, Brian.
No, no.
Yep. And then, and so Larry, we met last time. He is new to town, eager to get involved. There's obviously going, there's other openings that will be coming up as well, and he just can't be here tonight, but we decided to leave this on the agenda, given that we had met both gentlemen previously. So I think you all, you know, had a sense about Larry as well. So I will entertain a motion if there's no further discussion.
Yeah, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion to appoint Brian Langivan to the ZBA alternate position.
Second.
Motion. I don't know what's going on tonight, everybody, but everyone give me a little bit of grace. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion carries 5-0. Welcome, Brian, and thanks for your persistence, and you'll hear from the TA office in order to go to the clerk's office to get sworn in and what have you. Great, thanks. Okay, so moving along to our joint meeting with the planning board, I will just announce that Ray Mead asked to be taken off for consideration for this, so, and we'll go ahead and open your meeting.
I will begin by calling the planning board meeting to order, and since one member of the planning board is participating remotely, I will conduct a roll call of the members. Rob Hassinger.
I'm here.
Justin Wood.
Present.
Prabhu Venkatesharaman.
Present.
And Dave Robbins is present. All present in the count of four.
Okay, great. So Brian, are you interested in both positions?
I'd be happy to.
Okay. Okay, so with that, Greg, do you want to come on up?
Sure. Hello? Select Board, Planning Board, thanks for having me. Greg Dallamole, I've been the associate member on the planning board since June, been to every single meeting. I've learned a lot, and I'm ready to be a full member of the planning board, so I hope you'll consider me.
Great. Any questions from the board for Greg? Okay. All right, thanks, Greg.
Any questions from the planning board?
Yep.
I'll make the motion for appointing Greg to the planning board.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Madam Chair. Just quickly, Greg, I would, and I didn't ask the question while you're up there because I didn't want to put you on the spot, but I watched the, you guys doing your findings on the most recent, the 1727 Upton. In the meeting, you had some board members that were very clearly defining how you guys make decisions as a board, and I know you're relatively new. I would encourage you to take the advice of your senior members when they're giving it to you in a meeting. You can vote how you want to vote, but you have a lot of good experience on that board, and I hope it can be leveraged. So I just wanted to say that.
Where are we right now? Motion made and seconded?
Yep. I just say Greg has been with us. He's done a good job. I do like the idea here of having the associate move up in a situation like this. They already know some of what's going on, you know, and this is what I was hoping would be able to do.
Yeah, great. Anyone else? Yeah, I'll just say that Greg, I've watched, I think, all the planning board meetings that you've been involved with, and I appreciate how you've come prepared as an associate. You're prepared to jump in to vote as needed, and I do appreciate you looking at issues from different perspectives, so it's great. So without any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do roll call?
Roll call of the planning board.
So aye for up here, sorry. We were all aye? Thank you.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Venkatesharaman.
Aye.
And Mr. Robbins votes aye.
Great, passes unanimously.
It appears the motion is carried entirely unanimously.
Great, congratulations. Thank you, Greg.
I move adjourned.
Great, Greg. Madam Chair, just one thing I wanted to say is that for anyone that's watching this and interested in the planning board going forward, we now have an open associate member position that will be posted to the town website soon, and any letters of interest can be sent to the planning board and select board because that will also be a joint appointment.
Yep.
And I will second your motion.
Oh, but, so it's not debatable, but.
Cracking yourself up?
We need, we need to get the associate on board as quickly as we can.
Yep.
Because it impacts applications.
Which is what, you know, we did with the ZBA alternate, so we'll do the same with this. We'll post it immediately and get that filled.
On the motion to adjourn, Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Venkatesharaman.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins votes aye. Motion carried unanimously. The planning board is adjourned.
Thank you.
Let's continue on this journey here.
We're going to try. See.
We're going to try and give it our best.
It wasn't like a bad day. Okay, moving right along, so we're going to back up now. Thank you for indulging that. It was a request from an individual to change things around. So the Conservation Commission, we have one, one person. Are they here or online?
Amira. They are online, they just need to unmute.
Okay, great.
Ready when you are, Amira.
Just there it is.
We changed things around, so I apologize. Hi.
Hi.
We can hear you.
Okay, great.
Yep, sorry for the change in the schedule. Just wondered if you wanted to, you're applying for the Conservation Commission role, and just wondered if you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in this.
Sure. Yeah, so I live in Grafton. I've lived in Grafton for about a year now, and I use a lot of the public resources in town. I take walks on the many trails that we have every single day, several miles a day, and I'm really interested in environmentalism and conservation, and I saw the opening in the Conservation Commission, and I figured I'd apply and check it out.
Okay, great. Any questions from board members? Do we just have one opening on conservation right now? This is the last one. Okay, so if there's no questions or discussion, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chair. I move the board vote to appoint Amira Arroyo to the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Great, welcome. Thank you so much for volunteering.
Thank you all for your time this evening.
Someone from the town administrator's office will contact you with the information to go to the clerk to get sworn in.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Great, thanks.
Bye.
Okay, moving on to Facilities Assessment Committee. We have two applicants, Bob Egan and Dan Helms. And.
They're here.
Oh, yep.
Hi.
Hi. Bob Egan, 33 Hollywood Drive.
Hi, welcome.
Hi.
Just maybe a couple of words about your interest in the position. I know you both sent in some information too.
Well, I've been involved in the commercial instruction business for 44 years now, plus 30 years on the fire department. I just figured I could help.
Great. Short and sweet, I live, any questions or comments from the board? Okay, then I'll, we'll move along.
Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
I move the board vote to appoint, oh, wait, did we want to talk to Dan as well?
Maybe.
Let me back up. Time out. Hold on.
It's me.
Evan.
Hi.
Sorry about that, Dan.
No problem. Dan Helms, 94 North Main Street, North Grafton. This is my application identified, pretty much been in the business of assessing buildings in my professional career, and was on the Energy Study Committee back in 2009, 2010, where we effectively looked at all the town's buildings, did benchmarking on all the buildings. At that point in time, identified all the utilities. So it's kind of like, this would be a follow-up, I'm assuming, to that, the next generation of opportunities that we could do in town. The town has done a wonderful job, as is, moving forward since 2009, but just seemed like it would be a nice way to volunteer and use the assets in my professional skills I've had over X amount of years.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Madam Chair.
Yep.
Yeah, we received, you know, letters from both of you and just wanted to say thanks. You know, good breadth of knowledge coming in and really glad to see the way this committee is filling out, so thank you both.
Yeah, I second that. It's great to have people with experience and putting that experience to work for the town, and I know you both have done that before. How many, how many openings do we have?
A few more still, I think.
Yeah, I think we have three left.
And nobody else has applied?
Not yet. They're trickling in.
You didn't talk to Bob Rodak lately?
I think Ray did. I don't think he was interested.
He'd be dynamite, you know?
Oh, I know.
All right, maybe we could give him a little push, but.
Sounds like we might have one coming in, trickling in next week too, so that's good. Okay, barring any further discussion or questions, I'll take a motion.
Okay. Okay, Madam Chair, I move the board vote to appoint Bob Egan and Dan Helms to the Facilities Assessment Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion made, or carries 5-0. Thanks, thanks to you both.
Okay.
Okay. Really appreciate all the folks that are volunteering for all these committees. It's been great lately. Moving along to the Veterans Advisory Committee. Cynthia, hi. Hi, welcome.
Hi. I'm, well, Cindy Arahola. I'm a U.S. Army Vet, so that's one of the reasons. I volunteer through the VA, through Brookhaven Hospice with the No Vet Dies Alone program. So just want to give myself a chance too, to, you know, see what more for veterans and veterans' families are out there, so that's why I want to volunteer. Oh, I'm from Four Countryside Road, sorry. You need the address.
Any questions from the board?
Just a comment. Did you say Cindy, or should I call you Cynthia?
It's Cindy, Cynthia, but Cindy I go by.
Cindy, thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
And thank you for volunteering for this position.
Okay, I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to appoint Cindy Arahola to the Veterans Advisory Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Cindy, and welcome. Okay, maybe when I turn the page, I'll get my hat together. Election worker, we have one, one person interested, and we can just take a motion for that?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move the board vote to appoint Mary Alice Warden as an election worker.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Moving along to the appointments by the town administrator, Fire Chief.
Yep, so I have one affirmation for you folks tonight. It is to affirm the appointment of Tracy Sharkey to the Building Commissioner/ Zoning Enforcement Officer position. So we went through a pretty exhaustive search. We had a really great depth of candidates. I think we interviewed seven people.
I think we had eight applicants, we interviewed five.
Okay, felt like 15. No. So, but, you know, as we went through the process, Tracy really does have all the attributes that we're looking for. She's got, you know, really good knowledge, she's got all the credentials that she needs, and quite frankly, then some, and she just meshes in really good with the organization and that customer service spirit that we're trying to foster. So she prevailed through the process, and I hope that you'll support her with the affirmation. Also, she's not here this evening. Also, she's not here this evening. I did not ask her to attend. She attended for the interim conversation, and in our conversations, it seemed redundant, but I'm sure she'd be happy to come in and answer any questions you may have at a future meeting.
Yeah, I'd mentioned Evan. I didn't think it was necessary for her to come in for us again. Okay, so I'll take a motion to, any discussion or questions for Evan?
Just maybe a comment for those watching, listening. I think for all the reasons Evan shared and then some, I think she's a fantastic selection. I really do. So, congratulations. And with that, I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Tracy Sharkey as Building Commissioner, Zoning Enforcement Officer.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Jefferson.
Could I put you on the spot and ask you to share at least one of the things that put Tracy over the top into becoming your selection?
Sure. So, I mean, we really did have some great candidates, and we had some candidates that had more experience in the position. But realistically, what really pushed me personally in the direction of Tracy is the conversations that we've had about working with the residents of Grafton, about discretion, about, you know, the image of the department, the image of the town, and providing customer service. So, you know, she really checked those boxes for us. As the interim, I got some really great feedback about how she's handling herself and how she's been navigating, you know, some of the tougher situations that she had pretty much inherited. So that was really the underlying thing. You know, one of the things, I said it during my interview, and if you work in the department, you probably hate hearing me say it because I say it all the time, but my general philosophy is hire for talent and train for skill. And I really feel that Tracy is the talented, most talented candidate that we had. And also will blend with the, you know, organizational character that we're trying to have here, because that's important as well, to be able to work with the other, not only the residents, but the other municipal departments as well, and she seemed to check those boxes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, now you've really thrown me off. I think that was a discussion. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Okay, moving along to new business. We have a one-day beer and wine license, Rushford and Sons Brew House, doing something at the Willard Clock Museum. And is there someone here from?
I think Brian Goodman is here.
Yes, hello, Select Board. Brian Goodman, owner and manager of Rushford and Sons Brew House.
Hi, Brian. How are you?
Well, as always, thank you. However, everyone here is doing well.
Yeah.
So we are doing a Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce event. It is a private event with a cash bar. We've poured several events over the years at the Willard House, and obviously will maintain the same decorum we always do at the premises. We love the Willard House. It's an awesome part of the town of Grafton. As a non-Grafton resident, I love going there and love supporting them any way we can, and we love the Chamber of Commerce, the Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce as well. So, when either organization or both organizations ask us to show up, we always will.
Great. Any questions from the board? I agree with you, Brian. I love the Willard Clock Museum. It's a little gem that we have here in town. It's only gonna be growing, thank goodness. Okay, so if there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move the board vote to approve a one-day beer and wine license for Rushford and Sons Brew House on Thursday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for coming in, Brian.
Hey, my pleasure. Thank you, everyone, so much as always. Have a lovely evening. Thank you for having me.
You too, thanks. Okay, moving along, road closure request. I see Adam out there. Might want to talk about what's going on at the Common on this date.
Good evening, Select Board. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Excellent, okay. So, sorry for the delay on the return on this request for the Fall Festival. We wanted to be very intentional about our request to make sure it made the limited amount of impact as possible based on feedback from the last request. So, we're just adjusting our request again in the air of safety, but also in expansion of the event that we're having on Sunday, the twentieth of October at the Common. We're looking to close off, and it's really hard for me to explain it on the streets, but basically, the section of the Common that's in front of the Wheelock statue, from there through the end of South Street where it meets one forty is the request. That'll give us the ability to park a fire truck, our food trucks, and a police car as well. We're trying to expand to give the fire truck and the and the police car a chance for kids to kind of get into the road a little bit more, so the kids can expand and look at those vehicles, along with giving people the ability to line up on the street if they need to for the food trucks themselves.
So, that's a unique road closure. We haven't done our closure in that section of the Common?
Not that I know of.
So, South Street, so when you come up south, you're gonna have to bear left and go around the backside of the Common to go down one forty or down Whister Street. Why that side? Because that's a busy side versus the Congressional Church side?
Well, part of that was from another meeting we had. Sorry to jump in, but the Congressional Church, I believe Adam, you're looking to close the whole.
Oh, it's a Sunday, right?
And it's on a Sunday during the peak hours for the church. So, the Reverend requested that we open things up for them on that side. So, yeah.
Yeah, that was, yeah, so this is, like I said, the second request for this, just to try to eliminate the impact on, I know Sunday's a big church day, and there's three churches in that small area, or four, excuse me. So just trying to eliminate that, but also trying to continue to expand our event, so.
I just had, I know I usually wait till the end, but just a couple of questions myself. So, the event is on the Common. Does it spill over to the library, or you're just looking for it to spill over into the road somehow?
Right now, we're just looking to use the road. But the library is closed. We haven't really talked about moving any of the activities themselves to like the front of the grass or anything like that, but just just for the road.
I guess having these trucks in the library, it's a bit of a schlep over there. Maybe people wouldn't be as apt to go there, you think? In the library parking lot, I should say.
I mean, typically, a lot of people use the library as parking for these events. And I guess it's kind of like, it would be disconnected, I think, from like the whole rest of the event. So I think it'd be a little, it'd be tough, I think, for us to to pull that off.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I think they're trying to avoid road crossings as well in going back and forth between the trucks and the Common, so.
I have a question.
The Baptist Church also is super active at that time as well. I think they have a ten AM service on Sundays.
Would it be easier to go from the red kind of circle over to the triangle at some point? Because the church would still be open from the Milby Street side of the Common, and they would have the road right in front of the Congressional Church at the top of Church Street.
The Reverend expressed concerns about that for a number of reasons. So that, she just requested that that area not be closed.
That closure was the initial request a couple of weeks ago.
Well, it would still give them full access to the church and to the parking lot.
Yeah, there was something else that was compelling.
Yeah, from my recollection, there's, outside of an actual church service, there's, I believe, a christening or something going on, so there's just gonna be a lot going on in that area. So I think that's why she didn't want us to use that area, and we, like I said, we were willing to, you know, not block off the whole area, but this is kind of our option too, to avoid that area completely.
That was it. I knew that there was something else.
Yeah, there was something going on. I think it was, I forgot which event, but outside of the regular church service, something else is going on.
Baptism or something just after. I mean, it's been a nightmare for the church to have that all closed off.
I think it's gonna make it worse, because you're gonna have people coming up Whister Street that are gonna have to go around the backside to go down South Street, and you're gonna have people coming up South Street that are gonna have to go around the backside because it's closed, you know, from the triangle to the stop sign. So you're gonna get a lot of traffic around that side. And I don't know what people are gonna do coming up Whister Street that don't know that South Street is closed there.
So, one thing, I just don't think this map is updated. Adam had showed me this, where the lower closed is on South Street, and you see that line. I had suggested that if the board is, you know, willing to contemplate this closure, we would move that to the the end of the Wheelock triangle there, so that you couldn't even, it shouldn't be a dead end there. It should just route people to the left before you even get there.
Yeah. But that's not gonna help people coming up into the center to try and get to South Street.
Right, right.
Yeah.
It's just a, it's a rough spot, that particular triangle, on any day.
I think it's a very bad idea to close that right there for four hours, whatever.
What else? Like where else? Without crossing a road, there's nowhere else.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
You know, that's it. You know, this is the layout of the Common and the constrictions that we have. You know, it was, the initial ask was for a portion of the Grafton Common roadway there and on the opposite side, which, you know, would have been ideal, but, you know, even if this hasn't been tried before, it does cause some additional stress to the South Street traffic, but it keeps the, what I would consider the main traffic flow, you know, in one twenty-two, one forty, still wide open. It doesn't cause a pinch point at the church, really, the way the other closure may have, so. You know, I'm for giving it a shot and seeing how it goes. I think we'd also discuss that, you know, it's, this might be a good opportunity to discuss moving some of these events off the Common in the future, you know, especially on a Sunday or something like this, and exploring other locations throughout Grafton where we could host in the future, but for this year, I'm not opposed to giving it a shot.
How much room do you need, Adam? Like?
A fire truck.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to fit a fire truck, a police car, and then our food trucks, and that's kind of where they were gonna go. We tried last year, so we didn't close any streets last year for the event, and we had trouble getting the fire truck to park because a lot of people who live above the thrift store park there overnight. So we had trouble trying to get the fire truck last year to park anywhere. So this is, will help us to be able to give them a space designated for that.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Alamo.
Yeah, I mean, Craig, it's a pretty good compromise for what everybody's looking to do in this particular case, and just as a person who has to deal with those kinds of, you know, traffic, changes in traffic and detours. I mean, it's four hours on a Sunday. I think people will slow down a little bit, find their way. They'll know that there's activity there. Hopefully, they'll slow down and go, you know, a different direction. Usually, when I see things like this, I go way around.
Yeah.
Whether it's here or from Logan to wherever, which happens all the time.
I just think the church is being a little unreasonable. They'll still have full access to the parking lot in the church through the road directly in front of the church, and from the other side of the island, they'll have access to the parking lot. By taking that from that circle to, say, the triangle, there's plenty of room there, and the church can do whatever they need to do that day without interrupting any of the service or the baptism, whatever they have going. I just think the other side is a really busy area, and you're gonna have a lot of people going around that side. And a lot of people that come up Whister Street that are gonna, think they're gonna get through South Street by going on the left side of the Common, and then they're gonna hit a roadblock, and then it's just gonna cause, I think, a lot of traffic issues. And it's our road.
The ship has...
Just mention that.
Yeah, but the ship kind of sailed on the other side, because we already had that discussion.
What do you mean, the ship has sailed?
In terms of closing on the side of the Congressional Church.
Well, we can do what we think is right. It's our road, so.
Evan, you had something?
I just, Adam, you ran this by the police chief?
I haven't had the chance to.
Amber did then. And he had commented that he didn't have concerns.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that to sway anyone. I just want to, that's part of what we do when we do any road closure, is running through the chief.
It's too bad you couldn't do it just on the end there, you know? The top of the triangle on the Common.
Yeah, yeah, and now that, you know, and this is, you know, this will be a kind of a stopgap for this year, and I think now that I've been here a year, I'm gonna take the next year to really look at the events and see if these areas are serving us the best way. You know, and I think one of the resounding comments I've gotten from a lot of the people in the public is that, you know, a lot of the stuff is done at the Common, so, you know, maybe next year, we don't do it on the Common, but we've kind of, you know, just to see it this year from a more critical eye as we move forward with the years to come, moving it. But this is kind of the plan, the expected plan for now, and then we can make adjustments as possible, because if it doesn't work out, if it's not gonna work for us, then we're absolutely flexible, so.
Yeah, that was, my thinking leading up to this is just, it's, if you're doing an event that includes closing a road, that's a tough spot. Any day, particularly on a Sunday, and there's a christening over there, and there's, you know, everything else. And I agree with Craig that, you know, someone like me, I'm gonna go, and I'm gonna go right in front of the church now. That's gonna be a nuisance potentially for them, but that's, you know, we don't know how it'll all flow. So I think just...
What do you think the intersection at one and two Grafton Common is gonna be? When people are trying to get down Whister Street, they're gonna go to that, they're gonna go on the left side, they're gonna go to that stop sign, and they're gonna have to take a left, which is difficult to begin with, because it's tough up there. It's gonna be, gonna be a tough day up there.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see it.
We've identified that, or at least I have, for me, that road closures in and around that area are, you know, the food trucks work when the farmers markets are going, but if you're talking like food trucks plus a fire engine and other things, then it's a little bit different, so.
Yeah, the food trucks usually just park in one of the parking places across from the library, right?
Okay. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Alamo.
Just quickly, I think, you know, the Congressional Church has been really good to Grafton.
Yep.
You know, they they sort of act as the default overflow parking in a lot of cases. I think this is a reasonable compromise. So I'll just leave it at that. I think, you know, it's, I hope we don't see this next year, Adam. I'll put it that way.
No, I appreciate the feedback.
And it's not a criticism, it's just an observation that I just don't think there are any good options. But given the circumstances that we have for us tonight, I'm in favor of this.
Yeah, I think just being mindful of Sundays in particular, and then it just was the perfect storm because they have some other sort of function going on. Okay, I'll take a, do we need a motion? All right, yep.
I can do that. Madam Chair.
Mr. Alamo.
I move the board vote to approve the road closure request at the Common from Upton Street to Church Street on Sunday, October twenty, from ten thirty in the morning to two thirty in the afternoon.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Four to one. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, everybody.
I understand what you're, you know, we are. Okay, so moving on to considering a vote to approve the wayfinding, we have Fiona and Branding to sign.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for having me this evening to talk about this project.
Thanks for staying late.
Of course, yeah. Just gonna say. As well. So, thank you again. So I am going to, I think we have the consultant on Zoom, Mark Faverman, as well as members of the Advisory Committee here. So I'll start by doing a, I think, a brief intro of those folks. It's also posted on our project page. And then I will turn it over to Mark to run through his PowerPoint. So just before I do that, William, are you able to run the PowerPoint for me? I do have my laptop, just need, okay. So, some context about this project. So this project's been going on. We were awarded the grant from the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative in September of two thousand twenty-three. So it's been quite some time, but we, you know, with things like this, with designs and trying to garner public feedback and make sure that we're producing a product that the town can be proud of, it does take some time. So, this, the impetus for this was, there was a recommendation in our local rapid recovery plan from two thousand twenty-one to do wayfinding and branding project in just north Grafton, which, you know, realistically, you know, we wanted to open that up to be townwide, because why just focus on one area of town? Having a cohesive branding strategy is, makes way more sense than just having one targeted area, because then you'd have to have specific branding for other areas of town, which could be possible, but I think that it's in the spirit of working together and having one, again, one strategy was smarter. So, that was how we started this project. So we were awarded twenty-five thousand dollars to do this. There was no match requirement for the town, which is very nice. So I'll be going after a lot more MDI grants, I think, going forward, because they focus on kind of downtown areas, so something to note for the Common going forward. So we established the committee, the committee, the Advisory Committee consists of myself, Evan, Paul Skyler, who's here, Dave Robbins, who's here, and Adam Lapointe, who's also on Zoom. So we really wanted to focus on having specific representatives who will be involved with this process. Um, so we really wanted to focus on, um, having specific representatives who will be involved with this process from procurement through permitting, um, through implementation. So it was really of this close-knit, um, really more staff than your typical, um, committee that you would see. And we wanted to make sure we had representation from REC, Planning Board, because they permit a lot, um, most signs that aren't your kind of standard signs in town. Um, TA's office, obviously, and Historic, um, Commission, Historic District Commission as well. So we had a website set up online on the planning page where we, um, provided all our deliverables for this, including the two surveys that we did, um, feedback from our public forum at Apple Tree Arts in April, um, and other updates as they came along. So the, uh, in addition to that outreach, the advisory committee had roughly seven meetings, um, since establishment. Um, and where we re, went through designs, really tried to understand what the public wanted to see and make sure that we were, uh, working together to kind of craft a design that would be, um, suitable for Grafton. So I think it's pretty clear that, like, a lot of people, the bandstand slash gazebo is a, is a very popular landmark and something that, uh, kind of shown through throughout this process. Um, so I, with that, I think, Mark, I'll stop rambling and I'll turn it over to you to get into the methodology and the more specific, um, design elements of this.
Thank you, Fiona, and, um, hello, everybody. Um, how, how are you enjoying, uh, early fall so far? It seems to be quite, uh, beautiful. Um, no rain apparently very much. Um, anyway, the, this slide is probably in the pack, but it shouldn't be the first slide. Is there any way we can go to start with the earlier slides?
The PowerPoint's in the meeting pack. Everything gets a little bit further down after the designs. And, sorry, it's a little bit further. Lots of material with this one.
So, so the first thing I'll say is that the reason why, um, this is a good grant to, to win from the state is this is, uh, very competitive. And it, it is the most, uh, applied-for grant of, of the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative program. There, there, um, it seems to be a real desire to, to establish a unique quality to every community, uh, be it a large city or, or a smaller town. Um, we look at everything, uh, from the standpoint of what is the essence of the community? And that's from the history to the culture, to, to the residents, to, to even, who are the visitors who come through? So I'll quickly go through, um, the, the slides and we'll come up with some images at the, uh, end of the process. Um, next slide, please. So we looked at Grafton, next slide. Some history, next. Um, a, 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 a very, um, singular type of building in, in town, next. Next. And, um, this brought us to, to the, um, bandstand. It's called, um, gazebo, and it's also called a bandstand or, or kiosk in other places, so. Next. Next, the rural nature, the rural, um, farming aspects of the community, next. More history, next. The use of, of the common, next. Another historical building, next. And, um, some of the, the bigger players, um, one of course is Tufts Cummings School of Veteran, Veterinary Medicine, next. Next. The, the, um, farm, um, rural suburban con, uh, integration of the community, next. Some of the housing, next. So the way we start off the exercise is we, we, we begin by asking, um, the, the, the community to, to, uh, describe, uh, the, the town with one word. And these are some of the words that were used to help us gain a, a word picture. That's what we try to go after. Next. Then we go to two words. And then next we go to three. And sometimes out of the three, uh, a, a, a phrase or, or, um, uh, a slogan comes out. Other times it doesn't. Some communities have them, some communities don't have them. So this is not, um, something that is solid and, and hard. Next. And we looked at colors, we looked at, um, symbols and landmarks, next. And we, we talked about things like public art, uh, and branded street furniture, next. And then we allow the community members to talk about what they would like to see in the future. Because this is not something that we're doing just for the, the present, or based only on the past. But we're looking at this continuing into the future. So, um, hopefully the designs that, that we worked on, and we will show you the options at the end, um, demonstrate that we were thinking about everything. Next. So, um, Fiona, uh, set up these design surveys, which are, which were quite strong. And we had a number of design options for people to respond to. Next. So the final design options, uh, that we're gonna show you tonight, and, and we would like you to discuss and hopefully come up with a, a, a favorite, um, are, are these following, next. So the first one we looked at earlier, which is, uh, clearly the, the bandstand. Now, next, this is a branding so that it can be used in many, many different ways. So the, those first two images I showed you, we, we call gateway signs. And they would be put at the entrance to, um, Grafton. And, and then there are different sizes from A, B, and C, and even I, that would allow a, a greater flexibility depending on where it was located. And this would allow, uh, an introduction to visitors, uh, to the community. And you can see that some are directional signs, some are, um, uh, things that indicate parking, which is a, um, a discussion that, uh, you, you, you seem to have a lot about in, in, in almost every community. Um, and there are other, uh, pieces to this. Um, next. There's a second, very different option. We came up with a more graphic, uh, look at the community. And, and this is, uh, what we came up with as an option. So very different than the, the bandstand, next. And here the family of elements here as well, and shows you how they could be used and applied. Next. This is a directional, um, sign in both cases with the, uh, bandstand on top of it. And, uh, I think it's sort of a delightful, um, design that will help people find their way. Next. And here is a map that wa- was a beginning, a point, uh, to look at where, uh, signs and, and, uh, elements could be located. And, um, this is a work in progress because you may have some other ideas as well. And either system would work in these, um, locations. So the idea is where there is a decision point, where there is a, um, need for more information, a sign element will be placed. Okay? I think that's the last slide, isn't it, Fiona?
Yes.
Yeah.
And if I may just elaborate on Mark's point there, you know, additional outreach is something that the planning department is, is happy to do if we want to examine more locations in the future, once this contract ends, you know, having another forum and trying to figure out, you know, better placement of different, different elements, um, that were presented tonight. Uh, but I think, you know, the, we tried to really capture in two, uh, designs, which was very challenging to do because there was a lot of great feedback. But, you know, if we could get some consensus from the board about how they want to move forward, um, with the two that were presented, and then, um, we can talk about, you know, at a future point in time, um, implementation, cost estimates, and all of that fun stuff that pertains to implement, implementing the designs themselves. So happy to answer any questions to you.
Okay, Mr. Alamo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great job. Hi Fiona, that's nice to see you.
Hi Mark.
So I would say that, um, I would not be your creative consultant, not, that's not who I am. But I have been through this process three times in my career as, you know, just sort of, um, someone that, that part of the audience that they, each company would want to walk through, uh, their insights, their ideas, and, and, and all their concepts, if you will. And, uh, just, just from a process perspective, this plays right along. It's the right formula, the right ingredients, the right group of people from different parts of the town engaging in this discussion. It's the exact right way to do it. So just like maybe a tip of the cap, thank you all for doing that. It's a really nice job, uh, the way you did it. And just personally, if you're asking me what my vote might be, I'd say this, that it was in nineteen ninety-six, right? Is that when I moved here?
We don't know.
I don't know why I'm asking all of you. How would you know? So, and, uh, we, we, we drove in from Marlboro, old Westboro Road, into the common and right to the gazebo. And I think I've told this story before, in this room, at this table, that as soon as I saw the gazebo, I said, this is home. And we actually, there was no house either. There was a road, kind of. And it was the gazebo and the charm of that center of Grafton, that charm of, of the common, that I, I just knew it right away. And if you're, again, if you're asking for my vote, I like the sign, I like the wayfinding, I like anything with that gazebo. Or did you call it the bandstand? I think it's great. I think it's, I think it tells me exactly who we are. If we had a logo, that would be it. Again, I'm not your, I'm not the creative person, but that's just what hit me, like, right here. So I vote for that one.
We also have this, right? We also have the flag, right? Which has, that's our flag, so that's the gazebo on, so, everywhere.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions from the board? Andy?
Um, echoing, thank you for putting this together. Um, I'm curious, uh, I guess moving forward, um, like what sort of, sort of package does the town walk away with from this? Um, you know, like is, if, if we've used up this aspect of the grant and establish, uh, what the look and feels we want to move forward with? You said we could come back and decide, um, potential locations and where we, we would distribute these materials.
So I can, I can answer that pretty succinctly. Once you choose which design you want, our firm will provide a specifications package that you can put out for bid to vendors to, uh, fabricate and install signs with.
Oh, wonderful, thank you.
So we're gonna give you everything you need to get these made, once you decide where the budget for that will come from. And what's, what, the, I, I, I usually say this statement, I left it out, I'm sorry. Um, this is the, the, um, most cost-effective, highest visibility, um, capital, um, purchase that, that a town can make. So this is not terribly expensive, yet it has a huge impact visually on, on, on the community. So, so, and, and the other thing about this is it can be implemented, you know, uh, in phases. It doesn't have to all be done at once. In fact, the first one that we did about twelve years ago was an Ipswich. And the town meeting, uh, voted money over three years to implement their program. And, and it's still, you know, very vital and very clear what, what it was. Any other kind of questions? Uh, you know, we're talking about character, we're talking about personality, we're talking about all those things that, that affect, uh, the, the feeling of a resident or a feeling of a visitor when they come to Grafton.
And it's cohesive, the way it's all put together with the same signs, same colors, same messaging, same feeling. So you did Ipswich too, Mark? Your company did?
Yeah, we've done about thirty-five or forty communities, including Shrewsbury.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I normally, I am so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm done asking, I guess.
All right.
So, uh-
We did Wellesley and, and Brookline and, um, a few others that you might have gone through over time.
Um, I don't know which design we're gonna go with. I mean, obviously that's, that's a group decision, but just, you know, just if we do go with a gazebo, just thinking of the flag, I just can't help but think about Charlie Bolak, who, if he was here, he would have been involved, I'm sure, with this, because this would have been right up his alley, and I know he loved the gazebo. Um, and so I just have one question about the gazebo, and it was the first thing when I saw it. I mean, the, the gold or that color that, you know, brownish gold color is very rich-looking and it looks great, especially with the green, was there any concern that that's not the color of the gazebo on the common?
Uh, let, let's suspend this relief a little bit and let's consider this a really bright sunny day when we're looking at it.
That was part of the conversation.
So the colors are richer and brighter and-
It's definitely richer and brighter and it's fine, but I just immediately said that's not the color of the gazebo. So, um, if that's not a concern, if you guys went through that and that's what you came up with and you, and it looks better, which it probably does, than having a white gazebo against the green and the blue, then, um, I'm fine with it, but it's just, was a question, I guess.
Yeah, no, that's a good question, Greg, yeah. We, we, in terms of trying to be able to see it clearly, people who are driving by as well felt this color scheme made more sense and would be able to be interpreted better than-
Yeah, you know, people are gonna ask.
Yeah, yes.
Like, why did you guys pick that?
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, yeah. I heard the word delightful used. Um, I think both designs are delightful. I really do. Um, it occurs to me that, um, is there any way to look at them side by side? Or, or can, or can we look at the other one, I guess? The, I guess the one thing that struck me was, um, the, the, um, the gazebo is very much a, a location-specific element of Grafton. It's hard to argue against the gazebo. It really is. Um, but the thing that I really liked about this design was it sort of reflects, um, the nature of all of Grafton. I really like the sort of sunrise, um, element of it. And there's, it feels a little bit agricultural to me.
Yeah.
Which I know is really near and dear to people's, uh, hearts here in Grafton. Um, and it, to me, feels like it represents a little bit more, uh, it's a little broader, maybe. Um, Mark, it's funny you say that about the gazebo. Um, my wife and I, uh, it wasn't the gazebo specifically, but when we saw the, sort of the Christmas lights, um, up around the common, like, we were sold. And that was, that was the same exact experience. It's funny you say that. But I do like this, I like this design a lot, um, uh-
This is more contemporary, uh, as a design. And it, it, I think reinforces the concept of growth because it's natural, um, even though there are abstracted, uh, plants and trees there. It, it, it's sort of, uh, underscores that aspect of, of Grafton, which I see as a growing community as well.
I, I had that same, um, impression. I'm gonna just ask the question, is it possible that we could get, like, signs made up to look at them? Because I'm just, it seems like if we could see them, like-
We, I think that we could mock up using the plotter.
Yeah.
A couple of larger renditions if you wanted them.
This just doesn't seem like a decision we should take lightly necessarily. And sometimes things that on screen look different than when you actually see them physically.
Yeah.
Like in real life, I guess.
Yep.
You know, the three D versions of them. Um, so, uh, if, if the rest of the board really wants to, like, pick one design, you know, I'm happy to go along with it. But I think, I, I'd love to see a couple of mockups to just look at and just be around in person, I guess.
Anything else from the board? Appreciate those. Um, I'll have to do my, it was nineteen ninety-two. I know when I first got here, but Bob and I were coming in on one forty, as a matter of fact, and pulled it in, parked right in front of the old McGill, what's the new Steve operation, same saying, common, yeah. Went into McGill's and rented a place straight, straight from there. Um, so- So I appreciate both designs. I do like Matt's take on the second one. And it's a little bit of like, you know, tradition versus something new and, like you said, Mark, a little more abstract, I suppose. My questions aren't so much on the design because I kind of have something in mind that I like, but I just wanted to ask about the map. So I think it indicated that the Welcome to Grafton signs will stay. School signs, will those be changed or something? Are there something in there about schools?
We weren't initially going to interfere with any of the kind of mainstay signage and schools weren't a priority. We were going to try and focus more on, like, more historical, maybe rec assets and that we could probably could open it up. But I think there was a suggestion, and I'm blanking on which member said it, but we might want to avoid duplicating efforts with the schools. But, I mean, it's, but that's not final. So we're happy to.
Well, that was my, my thought is just, again, given that we have signs coming up on the agenda already and one of my beefs in the Common is like every time they put up a new sign, there's never a sign that goes. There's just more signs that keep getting put up, right? So just getting a sense of, are we keeping some of our bigger signs? And I love the idea of like for parks and rec having something like this and then even directional, like Willard Clock Museum is that way, so on and so forth, yeah.
I think that, if I can just jump in, Fiona, I mean, I think this was a visual representation to show the board that there's opportunity, but I think we would have to drill way down, once we've picked signs, identified locations. I think we're going to find that we have needs for, signs needed in places we never really thought here. And then also, you know, Emery, you and I have talked about the municipal addition of sign and not remove sign. So I think there's, probably that's a big part of the conversation as well as what can we condense into? Instead of having four different signs that tell you different ways to go, you got one at the corner that's got the arrows and they're really, you know, streamlined and slick looking. So I wouldn't put too much faith in the map. The map was kind of our.
Yeah, I'm a mockup. Okay.
You know.
It's a work in progress.
Yeah, these are the roads that come from other towns that don't have a sign, you know, that kind of conversation.
Yep, okay, great.
It's to help and to, it's really, the signs are really to establish comfort. And the image is about character. So there are the two Cs that we deal with when we do these projects.
Yep. No, and I noticed, you know, there are towns where you see this, right? And it's very evident. So I do.
Yeah, just to follow up on that conversation, I think the immediate objective is to, number one, do we want to go forward with this? Number two, which sign design do we want to move forward? And if we do want to commit to it, then we begin thinking about where exactly we want to put different kinds of signs.
Yep, I understand. Okay, so I appreciate, you know, Matt wanting to see them bigger. People might have different ideas and if they're ready or not to vote, or we'll leave that open to votes. I feel like I'm ready, but.
I'm ready.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Jackson.
I just want to add, I do appreciate the abstract approach. It just, for me, I think the, you know, the bandstand, gazebo, kiosk, whatever we want to call it, is so quintessential to the town. It appears on so many things already, you know, just having a little bit of a design background, it feels like we're just at, the second one is adding another design element to the town that just kind of disjointed the current look and feel a bit. So, you know, I'm just throwing out there that I'd probably go with the bandstand one. You know, and we've, not for nothing, invested a lot of money in the bandstand itself and, you know, beautifying the Common area. So I'm all for showing that off, so.
I agree, it's kind of quintessential what you think of. Should we just go down the road and vote?
Should we make a motion?
Yeah.
Sure.
To move the board to vote to approve the town wayfinding and branding plan and design as presented? Okay, so we'll vote on which one? I move to vote for that one with the gazebo.
Which one? The?
The gazebo.
Or both of them?
Well, they're kind of the same thing.
All the same.
Yep.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Go with the gazebo or the kiosk.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Yes, the kiosk, that was anyone?
Thank you.
Right, let's just go with that.
It's a dance.
To add something, though, I would like to say that you should blow up some of these and see if they work in terms of sizes that we're suggesting in particular locations. So it's half the picture is what you're going to come up with and we'll have it done. Thank you. And this is, it's nice to get a majority opinion like that. If only all things complicated were this simple to vote for.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks Fiona.
Thank you. Good work, Mark.
Thanks to the committee.
Shall we enact a town bylaw that defines the name of that structure? Settle the question once and for all.
No, I'm echoing kiosk. So thank you to Paul, Dave.
I don't think we should do kiosk.
Fiona and Adam for their work on the committee and to Mark. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evan also was involved.
It's okay, I was going to let it go.
Thank you all.
No, I'm just saying kiosks, I know there's the bandstand, whatever debate, gazebo, so let's just go kiosk. Yeah, all the fully forward. Okay, so moving along, to the five-year financial forecasting, speaking of things going easily.
Right. So just to lead off, you have no money for signs. All right, so those of you that have been through this, this is my third iteration of this, the forecast. So if you're new to the board or new watching at home, this will be new information for you. If not, you can, you'll recognize it. So before we start, I just want to give a preface. So five-year forecasts, they're simply a snapshot in time. The tool that we sent out to the board that is available to the public and is our, that big long spreadsheet, multiple pages, very complicated, that's a living document. And we are altering that on a weekly or monthly basis, depending on what we're doing. We base all of our information on historic trends and present-day data. We don't, there's no guesswork involved as far as the historical data goes. And it's just an example of a tool that the Grafton financial team can run different scenarios in. So we can, if you say, what if that was 3%, we plug in 3%, it changes, you know, the whole system changes. It works really well. And this, just a one note, so, you know, the presentation is not the end-all be-all. This isn't exactly where we're going to end up as we go through the budget process. It is not going to endure changes in the market. We have no idea what's going to happen with the state in the next three, six months. Those are going to alter how this looks. And it's not just guesswork or just saying, I think we'll be fine. All right, so our baseline assumptions for revenue, as far as our tax levy goes, we're currently estimating $923,000 in new growth in our projection. Historically, we've hovered between $280,000 and $800,000. However, we have been beating that over $1 million pretty much every year for the last two.
I believe this year will be the first year we'll hit over $1 million. I think last year was 900,000.
That's a million.
Ish. But this year, we're expecting new growth to be 1.2 million.
So just jump in at any point, Mary. If I get a number wrong. All right, so you've had two operational overrides. In 2015, you had a $2 million override. In 2021, you had a $3.2 million override. You've also had two stabilization overrides, which the road stabilization was in 2015. That started at 1.5 million and when you've added the 2.5% for prop 2.5 every year, you're now up to 1,615,000. In 2021, you also had a capital override and that is now up to 861,000 with the 2.5%. You also have a split tax rate here, which you'll hear all about again in November. And we currently have the 1% shift to CIP. State aid and offset, so we're estimating that our UGA, which is unrestricted government aid, to be about 1.9 million. That's an increase of 1.5 to 2.7 per year historically, so that's why we're pegging it where we are. And we're currently estimating Chapter 70 at 13.3 million, which is 81.5% of all the state aid that the town of Grafton gets. Your local receipts, we've estimated them about 500%, well, that would be wonderful. I could just, 5% greater than previous fiscal year. We have one cannabis retail shop, but it's insignificant revenue forecasted, even if we get the other two open. And motor vehicle excise is the largest receipt to follow, followed by departmental permits and fees. We have a modest amount of meals tax factors in, but the swing isn't great enough to really move the needle if we're doing a revenue forecast. Free cash, our average, five-year average for free cash has been about $2.8 million. Mary, what's our, what are you projecting for this fall?
Oh wait, closed. We received $4,965,846 in free cash.
So that's our certified free cash number, moving into the fall and then of course into spring town meeting in our capital season. We've historically been using about 1.2 to 1.7 million annually. And then our assessor's overlay is 0.6% of the tax levy. We have one enterprise fund for sewer and we just transfer receipts around at town meeting to cover. Thank you. Personnel service, so personnel services are generally shown as a 4.5% increase. That is because unless employees are at their top step, they have an annual performance review where they get one step, which is 2.5%, and then we have a 2% cost of living adjustment. We have three unions to deal with and we are eyeing public safety as we move forward due to the increase in population. And you'll hear about that through the budget process coming up. Our largest expense segment is education, as it is in every community that I'm aware of. Right, we're right around 59 to 60%, depending. And then, yeah, the rest of it is just kind of background information. You can, so our debt service, sorry, some of this is just kind of background information I include in there because we'll put this on the website and people can go through it later. Our outstanding debt service is just shy of $6 million annually. But the debt service percentage of total budget has declined from a high of nearly 8%. So we work our way through that. Capital plan, each year, we've been, we've been really pushing 1.5, if not, you know, higher, we'll be looking at for this season. And then everything here, I'm going to talk about briefly. These are, you know, your risks that you can't really control that much, which is unemployment, insurance and everything else that goes with that. We are part of the Mass Strategic Health Group, that is our purchasing agent that we work with. We are projecting life insurance to be fat, nope, flat. Medicare is projected to increase about 4.5% annually is what we carry. And we have to be mindful of our Worcester Regional Retirement obligations. So we'll go, I'm going to skip most of the state assessment on this page as background and then we can go into the next. Keep going till you get to the, yeah, everybody knows we have CPA. Yeah, okay, here we go. So this is our forecast for general fund revenues. You can see that we're forecasting our revenues to increase by 3.1% coming into fiscal 2026. And then you can obviously draw that out, 2.7, 3.4, 3 and 3. And so that's based on just our historic trend data, as well as, you know, any data we have from what we think is going to happen in the market. Right, Mary? Okay, I keep checking in with Mary, make sure I'm on the right track here. So this is the page that everybody wants to talk about. This is where the red numbers show up. So if you look at fiscal '25, you can see that we have what would be considered a surplus of, you know, just shy of a quarter million dollars. That is a little bit higher than what we projected when we went through the budget process, but we knew we were being conservative and that's where we like to be, right? That, if the current fiscal year's number is red, that's a major problem. And when you have a total general fund expenditure of 85 million, a quarter million dollars is not a lot of money. That goes pretty quick. What you'll see is that in '26 and onward, we start to run a deficit if we don't take any other mitigating action. And so one of the drivers of that is education. One of those drivers is also our unclassifieds. Unclassified is your health insurance, your, you want to run down the list, Mary?
Worcester Regional Retirement, our health insurance, Medicare, your town insurance, your audit, wrong, and unclassifieds.
Right. So that's a big nut for us, generally speaking, and it's really hard to control that. So you'll see that even what we're projecting from fiscal '25 to '26 in unclassified is a million dollar increase. So as we move into this budget process and as we continue to work with Jay Cummings and the school committee, as we continue to work with our insurance vendors and then our department heads on the municipal side, you know, that number that is shown right now is going to decrease. But how much is kind of where that question will fall. So we are projecting for fiscal '26 that there will be a shortfall and that we'll need to be prepared for that coming into the budget process. This is kind of just a carryover of the rest of it. This is just a breakdown of it in its more simplest forms. Go on to the next one. So variable to consider, so our new growth, we're real confident at it at 923,000. From those of you that have been through the budget process with me before, we're always conservative on our new growth. We, new growth will be higher than 923 in the coming year. How much higher is the question and we really, again, do not want to be on the other side of overestimating that. Unrestricted government aid, Chapter 70, those are some variables that we obviously don't control and we won't really even know until we get pretty much into the springtime, but we'll keep an eye on it. Borrowing, I left in here, we don't really have any borrowing on the horizon right now. And, you know, staffing, so school staffing, municipal staffing and public safety staffing. So we do have on our docket on the municipal side, the addition of one police officer. That brings us to the '25 level that we've been talking about for a number of years now. That's the five and five plan that we've been chipping away at. We do not have any additions forecasted on the municipal side. And I know that Dr. Cummings will do a broader presentation on what the schools are doing. I know he did one last week, but I'm sure there'll be more to come as we move through that. So what's next is, I did this presentation before last week, so Jay already did his, but school department. school department, obviously, will will be moving into the budget process even earlier this year. We usually start in December, but we're going to be well ahead of that this year. We are currently working on the capital plan and I've already started to build the budget book for this coming year. So that's the thirty-five thousand foot overview. So a lot of data, and there's a lot of data in the spreadsheet that I shared as well. But we're happy to discuss further or answer any questions you may have.
Just have one, I guess. Maybe a small thing, but do we, do we know where we are with the UPS facility? And did we project any revenue either through building permits or through, you know, equipment valuation on that property?
Yeah, so we we are building what our estimates are for all the developments that we have on the horizon. So we keep a spreadsheet and we use the assessing codes and our current tax rate to kind of build that out. The problem is with something like UPS, which I think is is a an example, kind of the opposite of the way I'm thinking about it, but you know, UPS has a TIF in place, so year one is a little bit lower as far as property goes, vehicles and all the rest of it, that's that's different. We're probably at least two to three years out from realizing that revenue, right? So we build that in. But the other thing we're really cautious about is, you know, carrying things that that are supposed to be online that we don't control, right? So like, we, the example we use a lot is is Eight Pine. Right? So everybody was was looking at that or or cannabis revenue as well. The town was really banking on getting this cannabis revenue and and, you know, already already kind of deciding where it was going to go. And then we got like twelve hundred dollars. So like, you know, we can't put that stuff in there. So what we'll do in the coming months is we'll share with the board and the public kind of where we think we're going to fall as far as new growth and what's on the horizon. But we want to keep a that mindset of what if this doesn't open on time? What if what if UPS says, well, we're going to come, but we're actually going to delay by two years? Now we've built that in and we don't have that revenue. So we, I I, the short answer is we're looking at it, but I think we need to be.
So there's not, none of that is in that?
None of that is in that. This is, this is based upon our new growth.
Just an average.
Yeah, an average essentially. Yep. So there's going to be hopefully years in there where we get a bump. It's hard to predict what that bump is going to be. And and we're going to, we're going to try. But again, I'm always cautious not to be on the wrong side of that estimate. We'd rather be conservative than than too aggressive.
For any new big development, we can see new growth expand for three fiscal years, you know, because there's, it's it's a process. They'll they'll pull the the permit, you know, we'll, Tammy, she'll, you know, give them the land. Okay, there's new growth there. And then as they begin construction, you know, we can go out and 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 she assesses and then we can capture new growth then. And then once the project is completed, we'll get new growth then. But these big projects, they could take, you know, one to two or three fiscal years. So it's hard to, you know, you can't say, okay, UPS, we're going to expect that and bank on it year one. So we wait until the permits are processed and then we really look to see where they're at in their development.
Yeah, oh, sorry, I wasn't looking around.
No, it's all good. I guess, thank you for the presentation. This is really super helpful and thanks for sending through the the spreadsheet. The thing that really stuck out to me is I look at the growth across all of the departments in town. And, you know, we're three to five percent, depending on which department's roughly. And then I look at the state aid and combined between unrestricted and Chapter Seventy, which are the really the two major contributors to that. We're getting increases of one and a half percent. That if if anybody is wondering about operational overrides, the state aid tab on this budget, it's a really good one to look at. So I just wanted to point that out, I guess. Is there any possibility that there could be upside in that area? It's it's just, it's such a massive part of the school budget. You know, they get thirteen million dollars and their budget is only, what is it?
Forty-five million.
Forty-five million, it's a third?
Right, so I don't know. Is is kind of where we're at. I mean, we we continue to work with the legislature and advocate for more money in Chapter Seventy. And, you know, I I will say they've done a good job of moving it from where we see generally initially and then getting feedback from the communities and then bumping it up. I know that we talked about how, you know, it really should probably be a hundred dollars a student as the starting point and not the we'll say thirty and get to a hundred. But, you know, it's 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 a, it's a tough area as we don't have any real control over over what we're going to get there.
Historically, for the chapter seventy, we we did receive two point thirty-six percent for F Y twenty-five. F Y twenty-four, it was a one point four percent increase. F Y twenty-three, they made an adjustment and we had an eleven point sixteen increase. F Y twenty-two was a two point seventeen increase and all years thereafter were one percent increase. So we're very conservative when budgeting.
No, I appreciate that. And I I recall that the eleven percent increase was because of COVID, a number of Grafton families actually fell below the poverty line, which drove that Chapter Seventy increase. So I would not expect that going forward.
No, no, I don't expect that either.
Yeah, okay.
Just to talk real quick about, so we carry the three and five percent on the municipal side in the forecast. That's generally not where we end up. Again, we're we're over forecasting what we may need and and we're 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 just trying to make sure that we've got some wiggle room.
I really appreciate that that approach. Yeah, that makes perfect sense to me.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
If I recall, Mr. Alvin, if I if I recall right, did Senator Moore tell us that they wouldn't be revisiting that formula until at least twenty-six?
That might be when they start the process?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yes, I think that is what he said.
I think they had said ten years. Is that accurate?
From when they actually start the conversation, yeah.
And it was a slow-moving, it is a slow-moving conversation to begin with, so.
Right.
So I have a question. So an unclassified, has that been like a million dollar bump kind of historically? Or is that?
Well, it depends. Your health insurance, our health insurance, we, our line is five million dollars. So, you know, I think a couple of years back, we had almost a seven percent increase on the health insurance.
Right.
And so then we went out to, you know, bid and and we went into Master Strategic Health Group and we saved money. Our, for F Y twenty-four, that was our first year. We saved over a hundred thousand on our retirees by making that switch.
Right. So I'm just wondering.
Generally speaking, yeah, it's it's up there. I mean, it's it's
Like three years ago, for example.
Right, it was eight hundred thousand, you know, it's it's always a, it's always a tough nut to crack, that that number.
Worcester Regional Retirement, that one's been increasing almost ten percent a year as well.
Sure. Okay.
Yep.
And our health insurance covers everyone for the town, all that work for the town.
That take it, yes. Yep, and the retirees. So retirees are a good portion of that as well.
Right, thank you.
Really killed the mood.
Anyone?
Everybody's from summer.
No, it's, I mean, it's great to have this information now and, you know, everyone, encourage everyone to continue to follow this, obviously, on both sides, the school department.
So I'll be at, sorry, I'll be at Finance Committee tomorrow night doing the, pretty close to the same thing. And then, you know, I think we'll really, we're 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 in constant contact with Jay and the school department and then we'll start pushing department heads to kind of get their budgets together, you know, as I said earlier than we normally do because I think we're going to have to have more more, a deeper conversation as we as we look of how we can navigate and and be creative. Anything you'd like to add, Mary? Anything I didn't say correctly? I did get.
Okay.
I'm just the, I'm just the face over here. Mary's the driver.
Oh, we figured that out.
Thank you for staying up with us tonight, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, we can move along then. There'll be much more of this to come. So moving on to the fiscal year twenty-five capital and road stabilization fund procedure.
Yep, so this is, again, something we do annually in October. And this is your consideration and potential vote to increase the two stabilization override amounts. So that we stay, you know, kind of current with with what's happening as far as inflation goes, so.
Any questions for Evan? If not, take a motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move the board vote to instruct the Board of Assessors to raise one million six hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars for the road stabilization account and eight hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents for the capital stabilization account for a total of two million four hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, barring none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No one, and it carries five zero. Thanks.
Thank you.
And next we have the consider to vote to sign the warrant for the two thousand and twenty-four state election. Do you want to speak to this at all, Evan, or does everyone just kind of take a peek at it? It's a pretty boilerplate.
Yes, it's it's essentially the same thing we do prior to every election.
Anybody have any questions or concerns?
Okay, Madam Chair, I move the board vote to approve and sign the warrant for the two thousand and twenty-four state election.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in, any further discussion, sorry? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thanks, Amber. Moving on to consider a vote to sign conveyance of rights easements and utilities for road acceptance of Elmwood, Elm Rock Drive, sorry. So this is something that
This is the, yes, Madam Chair, this is the culmination of the process that we've been undertaking with this development. So we have gone to town meeting, they've accepted the road. And we've gone through all the other ancillary steps and now it's the final vote and signing.
Any questions for Evan?
No, just that everything has been obviously checked out.
Correct, yep. We did that consistently, but we also did it before the town meeting vote, obviously, to be able to recommend that everything was was done correctly.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Alamo?
Madam Chair, I've moved the board vote to approve and sign the conveyance of rights easements and utilities for the road acceptance of Elm Rock Drive.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. And we're going to pass over the vote to ratify the Police Department union contract.
It's a good thing after that finance discussion.
Oh, don't make him nervous.
And so just moving on to policy for the placement of temporary signs. And and Craig, I can tee this up a little bit because this is something that I had looked into a number of years ago. Just the whole notion of signs in our town, not even just temporary signs, but just signs everywhere. And and I don't think that we have an ordinance per se. But but then I did ask Amber to kind of pull up what we have on the the books relative to signs. And we essentially have like a temporary sign permit application. People may or may not fill out. I'm not quite sure because I haven't been policing it, but
Yeah, we do have some folks that are, they religiously do it and they know the process and they they follow through.
So, you know, talking, it's kind of twofold, but it's interesting. They were talking about signs today because that might take care of some of the other things, but you know, the notion of the the temporary signs that just pop up all over and then sometimes stay there for a long time. And distractions and, you know, whatnot, so. I don't know if you want to, you'd kind of talk to me about putting this on the agenda as well.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Amber. I'll just say a couple of things. So and this is something that came up years ago and I think we cleaned it up for a while and then it kind of went back at some point, but you know, I I think about the common and, you know, although it's nice to have that country feel and have some, you know, signs about a town event coming up up there. It's a, it's a really dangerous intersection up there. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic, a lot of crosswalks, a lot of a lot of intersections and people going a bunch of different directions and some people not really knowing where to go that aren't from town, but even if you're from here or live here, it's it's can be challenging to try and get through. And having signs up there on the common is a huge distraction, I think. And it, for me, it's a safety issue, plus it gets pretty cluttered up there. I mean, there are signs that, you know, that have been up there so long that they get weathered and actually start to deteriorate because they've been there so long. So, and not that I want to, you know, there are certainly other other parcels in town where it might be a safer place to do it, but that, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of near misses up there every day, a lot of squealing of tires and horns and, you know, language and all that stuff that goes along with that. And it doesn't happen once a day, it happens a lot. So for me, it's a safety issue. It's also a little bit of an aesthetic issue, but for me, number one is safety up there. And I think we you know, it's just, if somebody ever got hurt up there, because lo- look at where a lot of those signs are. Some, somebody just drove right through the fence right there, the guardrails, right, right at that location, probably ran over a couple of signs on on the way by, right? So I think we should put a, put it into, at least, at least in that area. That's that's my two cents.
The other thing is even, you know, how do we let people know that there is a process that some have and, I'll be honest, years past, the Vote Today signs through the league, I've put them up on the common and I've never filled out paperwork, you know.
We've been monitoring that.
Well, there's some people that just put like Tag Sale, right? They just stick one up there and they don't, they don't know, right? But I'm, there is a lot of signs from local organizations and that I'm sure know the process and go in and see Cindy or Amber and get a
Yep.
Get an application, so. Madam Chair? So Craig, I guess, what are you envisioning? Like, let's say, you know, we got a bunch of applications like throughout the year to put signs on the common. Would the guidance be just not to approve putting signs on the common at all? Like, I guess I'm just wondering what that would look like in practice, you know, I I don't, I don't disagree with you because it's there's a lot to look at when you approach the common in terms of signage. So it would be good to have it be less cluttered. And there's a lot of people walking. There's a lot of crosswalks up there. There's a lot of people, you know, so that's my biggest fear. I mean, car accidents are are bad enough, but if there was somebody walking like that crosswalk from the common over to to Grafton Common is really close to that intersection. And there's cars coming up Worcester Street taking a right or cars coming from the library taking that left. and there's cars coming up West Street taking a right, or cars coming from the library taking that left, and it's just, it's just, there's a lot going on there. Um, so I guess ultimately, not, not to, you know, to drop the hammer, but I, I think you, you can't have some signs and can't say, I guess, yes to somebody and no to somebody else, so I think because of, because of the nature of what that intersection and what that area is, I think we, we need to find another place for people to be able to put up a sign to advertise an event that's not on, uh, in that area because of the traffic.
So that, that's an interesting idea, um, maybe we could provide some alternate locations that people could use on the approach to the Common, but not in the Common. Um, we do have a pretty extensive sign bylaw, um, and, um, I think typically, um, so, you know, anything that we would consider, I think would need to be, uh, dovetailed in with that, um, and it might be, um, since we have one of the Planning Board members here, um, and I know that he's very familiar with this sign bylaw, um, 'cause I watched him talk about it and redline it and make many, many adjustments to it. Um, uh, might be something that we could, um, ask the Planning Board to take a look at, to make sure that it is sort of dovetailed, and, um, the, in terms of notifying people and then, like, getting them to know, the sign bylaw only gets enforced when somebody complains, so, you know, our, it, I think it's a building inspector, he doesn't go around town looking for violations, um, but if people, you know, it's similar to like the, the lawn signs, like, if somebody complains and says they've put it out early or not in the right place or whatever, they're gonna go and do something, otherwise they, they're not looking at it, so. So that might be one thing that we could do, is to sort of have them s- start enforcing it potentially at, at the Common.
Well, I mean, I think, I don't know if it would be, and I'll ask Evan and David this, I don't think it would be part of the sign bylaw. It would just be, this board controls town property, and if we say that's a dangerous area because of pedestrian traffic, and we're just not gonna allow anybody to put signs there anymore. I mean, I don't think it's, we can certainly have them look at it, but I don't, I don't see that as a, as a, as a sign bylaw issue. I think it's a vote of this board saying, um, we're not gonna allow signs, we control the Common, right?
So you would just create a policy that says, when those applications come in, they get denied if it's for the Common?
Yes.
Basically.
And we'd have to put out a notice saying we're no longer allowing, you know, any type of signage because, because of the distraction with drivers and pedestrians, you know.
I mean, even quite frankly, like out here too, sometimes there's a, a number of signs now out in front of the municipal center that, again, not quite as dangerous of a spot, but it's.
Yeah, we used to have a sign, in fact, my class, class of eighty-three, we donated a sign, that's a long time ago. You're eighty-three too.
I'm eighty-four.
You're young, right? Um, but our class had donated a sign out in front of the, the high school before the new high school was built, and, 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 you know, it was used for, for school events, but it was also used for town events, and, and then I think, you know, like, like Mia got old and it probably, you know, didn't last, and I think when they did the new school, it probably came down.
We, and we have had conversations about the sign board, and we can ramp that back up, I think, I, I think they're, they're parallel. Um, one is, you know, us, the town, and the messaging about town events and school events and things like that. And then there's, like you're saying, Craig, you go by and there's a new sign there every day of somebody's advertising something, whatever they're doing. Um, and I think that if, you know, the, this board decides that, um, we're not gonna do sign placements on the Common, we'll enforce it two ways, one is that we don't issue a permit, sign permit for the Common. Right, that's pretty straightforward, um, and then two, we can, um, you know, collect signs and let people know. So, I've, I've been down that road a couple of times.
How far are we from?
To put a sign up there saying no signs.
A question, um, how far are we from doing whatever might be happening outside of the police station there, that, the big ditch?
The big ditch, um, well, we have a, we have a new chief coming online at the end of the week, so I can get an update. I don't know where we are in that, to be honest with you.
'Cause that's, you know, I've been talking about just general sign for town, um, since I got on the board, right? And where could we put that, and this would be exactly things like this, right? Vote today, or Little League sign up, so on and so forth, but it was a matter of where do we put that, kinda went down a couple of roads, and most recently, that maybe outside of the municipal center here, if in fact there was some work done to that big ditch, um, that potentially we could plop one right there. Um, becau- because I, you know, your point is, well, take, I think it was Matt, that I don't wanna just say, like, it would be handy to give an alternate, right?
Yeah.
That we still want, obviously, encourage folks to hear about this stuff, how are they hearing about various things, um, I just don't know that reading it coming through that Common is, is probably working either, but.
So, Madam Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
Just a question, Craig, do you mean just like this area right here, just this circle? Or anywhere in this whole?
So, no, no, I'm just talking about on the Common, usually they're, they're at the, that'd be called the, uh, the north, the north end of the, the Common.
Usually over right where that girl drove right through, yeah.
Yeah, usually from there over to, um, like, the intersection of one forty between the inn and the library. That's, that's kind of the.
So, maybe like at the, maybe to start, that, A, we've had this discussion, we are, we all are kind of in agreement, it was before you were on the board, but in the notion of the sign, um, happening at some point, the larger scale sign, yeah. Uh, you know, could we first look at really holding people to doing this permit, right? See if that's even happening, and would that scale things down? Um, I don't know.
I, I would, I would say the board, it, I, we're the government, so it's binary is better, right? It's either yes or no.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if there's any gray, we're not, you know, um, that discretion part gets, gets, uh, complicated. So I, I would think that if the board wanted to give it a whirl of, we're gonna, we're gonna have no, no signs on the Common, the center part of the Common, um, all the way around, I would say just make it blanket, and, um, you know, we'll give that six months and see where we get to, and I'll have Tracy, uh, enforce, uh, the Building Department enforce that. Um, and, uh, we'll go, go from there.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I'm gonna try this. I move the board vote to not allow signs in the Common, that area that we just, you just pointed at, for a period of six months. And revisit in six months, see how that works. Temporary signs.
Correct.
Yeah, it's, it's temporary, okay.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Um, I'll just note that.
We have one.
Oh, sorry. Hi, Greg.
So, Greg Mar, Thirty-Six Ferry Street, uh, wondering if you're considering things like the scarecrow contest that's coming up this month, uh, as something that would not be allowed with this change?
Yeah, I would see that as, right, well, I kind of see that as different, but maybe they don't, they actually kind of line that same side.
It's, I was gonna bring it up off why.
Maybe like, they could line the top two sides or something instead, but, okay, something that we can t- think about. Yes, yeah, certainly we don't, we're not gonna do anything with the scarecrow thing right now.
Right.
Um, but, uh.
Oh, man, there's the discretion piece.
I know, yeah.
Sean McAvoy, Eight Hollywood Drive. Would, since we're talking signage, not to belabor the point, but would you consider creating a couple of nice gazebo-looking community bulletin, community event bulletin boards?
Yeah.
That might dress up the Common a little bit, and maybe have, uh, maybe two or three other locations around town. I know that becomes a maintenance issue, because someone has to take down all these God sale signs and such as that, however, but I think something like that might be a welcome addition to the Common, if it's, you know, constructed properly.
Yeah, I come through Shrewsbury a lot, and, uh, um, I don't know what the roads are, but anyways, there's a, a white sign, basically it's someone's, you know, they go out and they change things, and they put information up there, so that could be one lower cost, but maybe a little bit more higher maintenance idea at some place in town, to your point. And then the other thing that we've been, I've been trying to, um, have happen is a more permanent, like a illuminated sign, like kinda like, you know, West Brom and Milbury have a sign like that with just ongoing messaging, but that isn't gonna happen tomorrow, so. Yeah, yeah, good point.
To your point, there was an old, an old sign, a song in the sixties, signs, signs everywhere this is.
That's, uh, been redone by the eighties rock band Tesla already redid that song. Madam Chair, just a quick clarification.
Yeah, sure.
Not on the song, which I'd like to get into more, but.
Later.
The, we're talking about like, uh, like an actual bulletin board inside a glass, that people would walk up and see flyers, et cetera, things like that, right?
That would be one thing.
In the Common.
As a walk-up, hey.
Or somewhere, yep, um, or something, like, again, in Shrewsbury, it's not like that, it's, they actually have like the letters, you know, someone goes up and they put the letters out.
Yeah.
But you're right, just like entering a, a trail, where you have those, the boards that you can just put something on.
Be nice to have one down at Mill Villages Park, too.
As long as we're getting a little bit of public comment on this. Dave Robbins, Ninety-two Georgia Road.
Yes.
Just so everybody knows who I am. Um, you know, Matt mentioned the, uh, the, the sign section of the zoning bylaw. There are provisions in that sign bylaw specifically regarding temporary signs. Uh, the board actually several years ago had some discussions about some aspects of that, where we never really were able to resolve what we wanted to do, but if I remember correctly, there are at least some situations where temporary signs do not require a permit, you know, temporary signs are for like, you know, you put them up there for maximum thirty days or something like that. You know, there's the details, I couldn't quote you offhand, but a lot of that doesn't, you know, it's just, you don't have to get a permit for it. So what you're fo- focused on now, your board is specifically, uh, you know, what, what you, you, the motion under currently, currently under discussion is basically the Select Board's policy regarding temporary signs around the Common, which I think, I don't remember where it came from, but I fielded a question along those lines back during the bylaw review, and my recommendation was that as far as signs around the Common, I think the Select Board, Select Board has the option to adopt a policy, uh, reg- regulating that, however, you know, and, and however you want, and that, that's where you're at right now with the discussion. You know, we can continue to explore how such signs are covered within the bylaw, but on, you know, on anybody's property where, you know, temporary signs might be allowed by the bylaw, the, the property owner has the, uh, ability to regulate and allow or disallow that. That's not in conflict with the bylaw.
Yeah, I think the board as the placement authority has the, the final say in town property, so I, I think you're well within your right to do that.
So we have a motion second, and I think everyone on the board has spoke, I'm not gonna take any more public comments right now, but I just wanted to, um, summarize in that, uh, for me, this isn't, um, trying to have people not have a place to put signs up to promote their activities, um, I think to Craig's point, if you sit up at Uncommon Cow for an hour, like around four o'clock, you'll kinda see the problems and the concerns, um, that, you know, people might have up there. Uh, so it's not just as the aesthetic as well as, like you said, the safety, and then just trying to sort out a better way for us to do this as a town, you know, period. I just, I love that sign in Milbury, they have such a great sign.
They do, that's a nice sign.
We could emulate that, but, so it's not a, an, an effort to, to squelch any of that, and it's just a matter of the board, give us maybe six months to try to sort out how we can make this work, you know, for everybody. Um, so that being said, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion carries.
Just one thing, um, so it would, I hope we continue the conversation only, because it would be nice to have some alternatives for, for folks, so, and I don't know if, if you have anything, any ideas, but, you know, when people come in, you know, we can say, gee, you can't put it there, but you can put it there, you know what I mean, yeah, just so.
Yeah, I think we'll have to bring some of that a little bit, yeah.
Maybe in the short run, something a little, you know, not temporary per se, but less costly than the the whole big thing that we were thinking.
Okay.
Um, okay, so, yeah, we'll keep that as a, in the back of our minds if people come up with, uh, other ideas as well. Um, I'm gonna pass over the Board and Committee Connaught, 'cause I'm working on, uh, coming up with like a policy and a document, and so I, I started on the weekend with kind of the tail end of it, because I thought maybe there was a, a policy in place, and so while I was working on part of it, um, relative to our action, when there might be an issue, um, I then came to realize that there really isn't a policy that I would, so that's what I'm working on now, and I will get that to you guys, um, within next week, and then we can talk about it more. Um, so if that's okay, we'll pass over that, and we'll put it on another agenda for sure, next agenda, um, for our next meeting. And then we'll talk about the town warrant, the fall town meeting warrant, next.
Yep, so we're gonna turn this over to William, he's the keeper of the warrant.
Yep, uh, so a final copy of the warrant was sent to everybody on the board, it has been vetted by Town Council. There are eighteen articles on the Fall Town Meeting Warrant, consisting of three from the Finance Director, two from the South Grafton Water District, one from the School Department, one by law change from the Planning Board, three from the Board of Sewer Commissioners, four from the Community Preservation Committee, and four citizens petitions. A notable change is the posting requirements on page ten have been updated to reflect the changes made at the May Town Meeting, and I would thank Mr. Mar for catching that. But beyond that, I'm happy to answer any questions anybody may have on the warrant.
Some questions from the board? I just got a question on the first two articles, so I know that, you know, during town meeting, you'll speak to this a little bit more, but just to give me a little bit of information on that.
So those are both, um, rescinding authorizations to borrow? Um, and so what, what's happened with both of those projects, um, is that we, we don't need that extra capacity to borrow, so we rescind that, um, and that affects like when we get audited, and when we're doing our end-of-year, um, end-of-year numbers of what is sitting out there that we're authorized to borrow that haven't yet. So, it's kinda like you're, you're, if, think about it, I always explain it like a credit card, so you had a twenty thousand dollar limit, that, that's not great to have just sitting out there if you're only using five thousand bucks. So we, we claw that back, that authorization, so that meets the actual demand that we need.
Okay.
Um, and the, the, like, the fire truck one is because we're a year behind, so we made an extra payment on a truck that we hadn't borrowed any money for yet, so we don't, we don't need that one year's worth of money. If that, I hope that explains.
Yep.
Okay.
And then just on Article Three, I'm assuming like the South Grafton and the Water District will talk about, like, what are the terms of this, of said lease?
Y- yes, um, yeah, in short, yes, um, I think they're gonna have a presentation. Um, Steve Lemoine from the Water District has been working with us, we've been working with Paul Canoyer as well, um, and so, and we've vetted it through council and all that, but yes, someone will, will speak to that in depth.
Anyone else? It's a pretty short warrant, by the way. Okay, so I will, um, if there's no other discussion, except a motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move the board vote to close and sign the Fall Town Meeting Warrant as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, anyone opposed? Uh, motion carries five zero. Okay, and then we will go on to the update on Deep Back Earth, um, Evan, if you have anything related to that?
Uh, yep, so, you know, it, nothing, nothing drastic from the last time we discussed it, so we continue to speak with, uh, DEP, I have not spoken to DEP in probably five days. Um, the Board of Health was in contact with DEP today, because their hotline for reporting smells has been, uh, going in and out. We tested it a number of times throughout the day today, um, and it definitely isn't working as designed and or advertised. Um, so we reached out to Board, uh, Board of Health reached out to Department of Environmental Protection to find out, um, you know, what we should be doing, what we should be advertising, and what we can push out. Um, we did not hear back by end of business today, um, so we will follow up with them first thing tomorrow. Um, I've also, uh, I've been working with council, I've had council in contact with many different state agencies, um, trying to push for the resolve that we keep hearing is, is in play. Um, and, uh, you know, we are getting, um, I think some, some positive information, but also some non, uh, non, uh, specific information as we've, we've been dealing with. And I think that's my update for today.
Okay, anyone on the board?
Any response from, uh, any of the folks over there about visiting, uh, uh, uninvited visiting, uh, residents?
Um.
Without permission or invitation?
No, we, we got one response that was, uh, you know, arguing that it wasn't occurring. We then responded with another notice that just said, it's not over here, and just stop it. Um, I'm sure there's residents here that are gonna speak, um, and maybe they have different information than I have, I have not gotten any call. I have not gotten any calls in our office or, or that I'm aware of, um, saying that that's still continuing. And obviously if it is, we'll go to the next step. But I haven't, I haven't heard that in, in say the last week.
Anyone else on the board? Uh, Andy?
Um, you had sent us a memo outlining some of the email correspondence and, and, um, information requests that had gone out. Uh, you want to take a minute to elaborate on any of that or?
Um, I wasn't going to, I figured that would just end up in the packet. We do, we do continue to receive public records requests, so we've got, uh, two very big ones going on right now. One is related to, uh, the feedback one is not huge because it, it covers a lot of, uh, information that we already extracted. But, uh, that, that's taken up a, a pretty good deal of staff time right now as responding to public records requests.
One question, Evan, we had talked about, um, trying to get the, the local, um, DEP director for, you know, this region to come, who's been obviously aware and involved. And I spoke to her on the phone, I know you spoke to her multiple times. Mary, I think her name is?
Uh, Mary Jude, yeah.
Yeah, so did we, will she come? I mean, did we invite her to come?
I, I didn't invite her from last week to this meeting, it was pretty short. Um, but I, I, that's the intent is to invite her to come, invite fire to come, uh, you know, all those different agencies that
Yeah.
we think, uh, you know, have a, have a part to play, um, to kind of just check in with the board and maybe answer any questions that residents may have.
So if we could like get ahold of her, you know, soon, so she can at least plan if the fifteenth is our next meeting and
Right.
and if Amber puts it on the agenda, we can, you know, have the, have her here to,
Yes.
you know, for the residents and for us.
Yes, agreed. Agreed.
Anything else from the board? Um, I will just say that I reached out, uh, talked to Evan, but because the Board of Health and the, and our building department have been up there not too long ago, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I just kind of followed up on that just to see, you know, from a town side, who can go in and, and what's going on. We obviously know that fire was there recently and had a number of, um, requests, which from my understanding is that they have done what they have need, what they need to do so far, um, relative to those requests specific from fire. I also emailed, um, Michael Moore's office, uh, David Meridian's office and the DEP person, maybe like two weeks ago or week and a half ago thereabouts, and didn't hear anything, but had a chance to talk a little bit with, um, Representative Meridian this weekend. And then I did hear from Michael Moore's office today, um, and basically the, the representative who called me just indicated that, uh, he feels that this is being taken very seriously, you know, by DEP is what, what he's understanding. I did mention the issue with the hotline, um, just as like a specific thing that I had seen recently. And so he did say he was going to do whatever he could, um, it sounds like you have as well, to try to, to, to figure that out. Because if that's our only, or not, I should say our, everyone's, um, way to communicate what's going on, we need to have that working. And I know I also did a little test run on it a couple of weeks ago, one morning, and I only called twice and I, I don't remember what happened. It was almost like it just rang, there was definitely no answering machine or anything like that. And I ju, and so I tried again and then I didn't, you know, keep at it. But I did mention to, um, the representative that called me from Michael Moore's office that, you know, to be asking our residents to make these calls over and over again, and then when you call, you have to call, you know, five or ten times, uh, that morning. It's, you know, we see that, that, the hotline has to be fixed for sure. Um, so just a couple of things that, that, you know, I'm trying to do on, on my end to see what is within, you know, my purview. Um, so we were expecting a number of people today and, uh, just wanted to, I kind of threw it out there, uh, just trying to keep this definitely to the twenty minutes, given that this meeting has been a long one anyways, um, but I want to recognize folks that want to come up. And if you can, just limit your comments to three minutes, that would be great. And then, and primarily just anything new or updates for us, as you know, hopefully most of you know that this board is, is, is very aware and very, you know, to committed to try to do whatever it is that we can do, um, to help. And so, um, if there's, you know, new information or questions that you have or things that you want us to do, please come on up and just try to keep your comments somewhat brief if you don't mind. So I will recognize folks from the audience, if anyone wants to come up. And if not, no, not anybody on Zoom? Okay. Hi.
Hi, my name is Amy Thornton, I live at fifteen Maplewood Drive, which is directly across from Wyman Gordon's, which is directly across from Feedback Earth. Um, this is the first time I've come to one of these meetings to address feedback. My question is, and I don't know who's in charge of this, but what is the threshold for a cease and desist? Um, who's in charge of that and what has to happen for that to happen? Because these issues have, as you know, have been going on since twenty twenty-one. They have repeatedly promised fixes, the same fixes, it's the same line over and over again. I know you're aware of it, I know you're trying, DEP is trying, Environmental Protection is trying. Who, who is in charge of when things like that have to happen? What do we have to reach to get there? Is my question.
It's a good one.
And it, it, it just is astonishing that they have the upper hand all the time. And so, um, I, I just, I guess that came to mind this week. So, thank you.
I don't know, do you want to answer or do, I mean, I can just say from what I understand, um, the fact that we don't have jurisdiction over this notion of, you know, odor or what have you. And, and now the DEP is involved and there is a case, um, so to speak, I guess a case opened, um, then that makes it so that our hands are a little bit tied. In other words, you know, they are the, the authority here, well above me. And in order for them to do what they need to do, it's almost like, you know, we can't interfere per se. That's how I understand it. It's not a great answer, I completely understand, but, uh,
Yeah, I mean, it's DEP, um, and, you know, superseding DEP is the Attorney General's Office. So by reaching out to all these different state agencies, um, you know, that's, that's where your enforcement is going to come from. Whether it's DEP leaning on the AG or if it's DEP itself, um, with support from the AG.
And is that typical, um, like with town, is it just because it's an odor issue and that's like subjective to, yeah, so if it were any other type of business that were like blatantly breaking the rules over and over again, you would as a town be able to go in and put a stop to it?
Okay.
Then we have.
Okay.
Just, can I offer a, a quick comment? Um, this is, uh, this is probably eight, nine weeks, I think. This has been a little bit more, more of a, a much warmer, hot situation. And you made a comment about upper hand. Feels like that upper hand is lowering a little bit.
I hope so.
For public sentiment and from the group of people here, um, I don't think we agree on everything, but we agree on this.
Yeah.
And we speak with him regularly, we meet with him regularly, um, and we do definitely hear you and we are, and we agree with you.
Yeah, no, I understand, it wasn't a flight to the board, I was just saying that they just, for three years have been, feel like they're playing the system and so it's just frustrating and I'm sure it's frustrating for you as well.
It, it is, and I, that, and my comments are meant to try to find a way to reassure you a little bit. Um, I read nothing, um, online, I hear this and conversation about all of this and that's great and there should be. I don't participate in any of that, but now that we're here in person, my comment to you would be, I think that's changing and the idea that this whole group here, that there's a lot of people that are involved in this. It, it feels better to me as a resident who doesn't want this stuff happening.
Yeah.
It feels like that upper hand is lowering a lot.
Yeah.
So, for whatever it's worth.
No, thank you.
That's my personal perspective.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and I agree, it's, it's amazing that this has been going on for so long and they've broken, seems like so many rules and, you know, so many violations and that they're not shut down. It's amazing that the DEP, I mean, you know, we're all pro-business, you know, we need business. But in this case, these people, it's bad business, right? So, and, and they're bad actors up there and the fact that, that we haven't been, that the DEP hasn't gone in there and said, listen, stop operation until you can figure out how to do this without polluting the neighborhood. Um, it's just, it's just mind boggling that they haven't pulled the trigger on that. So I don't, I don't know what, what it takes to your first question.
I don't know either.
I know, it seems like they keep, they've got nine lives.
Until something happens, keep the pressure on.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, unfortunately that means getting up at one in the morning to call the hotline when we smell it or like, like trying to call it today and it didn't work or, you know, I understand that and that's what we'll do, but it just, it
We're all doing the same.
Frustrating.
Our state reps, their phones are off the hook.
Yeah, I appreciate that, yeah.
Um, so now's the time, uh, so keep the pressure on.
Yeah.
We just need to keep making noise until something happens.
Okay.
And I, I'll just say just quickly, because I know Matt, if it's okay, I just shared that you mentioned this weekend, um, you know, having gone up there, driven up there, and I drive up there at least a couple of times a week.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if you see that, this red Mazda slowing down going behind, I pull into the trucking guys.
Yep.
I know it says, don't pull in, it's five hundred dollar fine, but I figure I'm not dumping, so maybe I can just twirl around. But, you know, that's the level of engagement of, you know, of your board, um, for what it's worth.
No, it is, it, it, it's, it matters because when you're dealing with it, it feels like it's, um, yeah, it's not good. So I appreciate the work that you have tried to do and, um,
And it seems to me when it's this level of, you know, DEP and or AG that it's, you know, that's a different level of folks and, and we have to.
Yeah, it's a, um, it's, it's probably a bad analogy and I probably won't even make it. It's probably best that there's a certain, there's certain activities happening with those folks and you wouldn't want us to disrupt that. However, I don't know if you're aware of some of the, there's other interactions and communications that have gone out to them and there's other evaluations done by the fire, the fire, uh, department. So it isn't as if the town, what the town, I, it, it, I think, so I don't want to sound too, um, uh, uh, like authoritative, like I know everything, but I think that what the town can do is doing.
It's being done.
Which is really cool and some of the communications, I don't know if any of you have seen them, you know, based on your feedback, based on, hey, get them on my property. Again, I agree with that, like really, I, I'll so very much. You know, some of that's like hit directly.
Yeah.
And more than once and in writing and very public.
Seen some, so, yeah, it's nice to know, right, that somebody, that, and we know you have our back. It's just frustrating when it appears that nothing gets done because they work the system. Yeah. It feels like, but I do appreciate it and I, and luckily we have somebody who is getting that information for us and sharing it with us so that we, we can, um, not duplicate efforts and just try to come to a solution where we can just exist.
You have a leader, don't you?
Yeah, we do, thankfully. Okay, thank you for your time.
I think just that the, this near term, uh, hot button item is getting that hotline. Like everybody and their brother needs to be on that and try to get, make sure that's working.
Yes.
Jesse?
First, I'm going to fix this for my friends at home that like things neat. I got you guys. Jessie Remillard, twenty-seven Flynn Pond, um, again, thank you for what you've been doing. I will say since the letter went out, I haven't seen her, I haven't heard of anybody seeing her around, so it seems like that was effective. Things that are important to me that have been since the first time that I stood over here, uh, is that everybody has the ability to get their reports in. As of this morning, we still can't. There's a secondary part of their call procedure where they can email, we can email DEP directly and DEP will forward that to the hotline. An ask would be, and I hate that our reverse nine one one is the, the use of this completely deficient company, but that we would again utilize reverse nine one one to say, hey, we're aware the hotline at least sometimes is not working. You can also email, um, because that's the only evidence we have in this case. Like I can't be like, here's a bottle of odor, exhibit A, you know, the reports are all we have. Um, so that's an ask I have. The other thing that I ask is just we give correct information and accurate information. Evan, you opened with saying nothing drastic has happened, there was a fire, the building was on fire. Right, on September twenty-third and twenty-four fire people had to go to the fire, that's fairly drastic. So my, my asks, um, and I sent the email, were for updates from our departments that we have access to, Board of Health, Conservation, Highway Department, Fire Department, um, and that, that information is accessible. That's why you're getting the records request because we're not being given it, we have to go around and ask for it directly ourselves. So trying to be good with my three minutes, but I have the fire records, you guys. And I highlighted just a little bit of it so you can see how egregious this place is. December twenty twenty-one, their second violation for disconnecting their fire alarms. April twenty twenty-three, during a structure fire, the fire department noted them for thirty violations. One was for resetting the alarm without fire department authorization. One was the fire department wasn't even alerted. One was closing a butterfly valve that made the sprinkler system not work. Uh, another one was taking off the insulation that keeps their pipes above forty degrees, so the sprinklers work. Modifications to bypass the tamper switches. Um, and the last one, number thirty, the fire department doesn't have any records that indicate any work was performed by a qualified individual. All right, so that's twenty twenty-three. August of twenty twenty-three. Storage of three very large unknown quantity containers of organic peroxide onsite without permit. As the organic peroxide is flammable, there needs to be no smoking around these containers. A discarded cigarette was found on top of the containers. This is an extremely unsafe practice that can result in injury or death. Same report, one line down. A fan was placed in front of the carbon monoxide alarm that appeared to be placed to ensure it would not activate. This is August twenty twenty-three, right before we did the TIF vote. Right, so that's, that's what really, I'm not painting an unfair picture, this is available from our fire department. This is not a great business with great people. They're putting people per our fire department in the way of death. You know, these are their own employees. July twenty twenty-four, right? An overabundance of pallets that need to be properly disposed of because they pose a fire hazard. An approximately three thousand gallon of fuel truck that's not permitted is stored onsite. And I heard today that it's still there. September twenty-third, this is the fire that is not drastic. At the fire on Monday, a permit for the diesel tank, the one that they mentioned in the, the press release, was not pulled. A permit is required for combustible liquid. Debris collection is obstructing an exit door near the sprinkler room. Housekeeping needs to ensure electrical panels, switches and plugs are not covered with flammable dust. Like this is not science stuff, this is dusting that they're not doing. Plumbing and electrical inside the sprinkler room that was to be moved, per the owner, is still inside the room. So they've been asked to do all these things and each time it says you get seven days to fix it. I don't see any times they've been fined, I don't see any times they've been shut down. We're not getting the records given to us, what we hear is that it's nothing drastic, this is a great business, there's no rats. And it just, it makes me question why? When this is all available, like in the same building, like with an email away, this came in, in the course of one day, record was. I have questions on that. But moving forward in a productive way, which is what I aim to do, the reverse nine one one, I think is a step. I would like a commitment that we contact Shrewsbury, Millbury and Worcester to do the same because those people are impacted, they need to have it. I would like to see proof of insurance, that Feedback even has an active policy. I've worked in insurance for many, many years, places with fires, getting on renewed. I would like to know when this place is on a giant structure fire again and it catches all of our local businesses that do the right thing on fire, that they have some recourse. I'd like to know in the TIF, if they don't make those thirty full-time jobs, is there any recourse because the TIF says they expect to, doesn't say they're required to or they will. And their posting on Indeed dot com requires their new applicants to move to Grafton before they're hired. That's not providing a job to a Grafton resident, that's importing Grafton residents. Like, they really think they're fooling everybody? DEP doesn't report to the AG, DEP reports to EEA and they report to the governor, and I think that's important. I think, you know, if you're going to be a proper care- I think, you know, if you're gonna be a proper carer, you need to know which manager to speak to. So those are the managers. I think that's all I've gotten here. I'm trying. Will, will Feedback be asked to pay for their own fire calls at some point? Cause we're giving them free tax breaks. We're giving them free fire calls. This is a huge burden to all of you. It's a huge burden to Board of Health, Conservation, Highway Department, like, like you're saying, it's bad business. It's very clear. What can we do at this point to have them take some ownership of this? But I, I'd love to leave the monitoring and, and communication of this, like in capable hands. I don't feel like it is yet because I haven't heard the information that we need. And what I do hear is nothing drastic, like still today. It, it's, it's very drastic. You know, our firefighters are going in there. That's someone's dad. That's fairly drastic to me. Yeah, a place that has three thousand gallons of fuel that shouldn't and cigarettes on top of flammable material. It is drastic. And I, I know they're working on it, but I would hate to see someone die in the process of building a really solid case. Like that's, that's just not worth it. So in closing, I would just like to highlight, they are running a circus over there and we can't continue to treat clowns like scientists.
Thanks, Jessie. I'm just on one of the things I did ask, um, request through the town administrator's office that the Board of Health, we get the weekly updates or reports and that maybe they could include the, the call information on there. So it's something that comes through in our packet, right? It's, how do people see that?
It's, it's on the website.
It's on the website, yeah. But we, the board see these weekly, um, reports and so that the Board of Health could add that as a line item at least.
Yeah.
One thing, to Jessie's point about the fire inspections and all the violations and seven days to fix. Have we, could, uh, you may not know this, but did we go back and check? I know sometimes we do, sometimes we may not. To check and see if all those violations have been corrected and if they haven't been corrected. You know, not that fines are gonna help, but you know, there's gotta be some recourse, um, that we can take if, if, so I don't know if you could, if you could check with.
I reached out to the chief today and so what he indicated was that, um, the things on that list had been taken care of with the exception of the diesel truck thing, or diesel, whatever it was, because it's damaged or they have to replace that or something.
Are they storing fuel in it? Do we know? On the old fire truck, on the old, uh, fuel truck?
I'm not super familiar. I just had that one line that said it was a three thousand gallon fuel truck onsite without a permit.
But to your point that, yeah, we can try to find out whether, make sure that everything's permitted and whatnot.
So, uh, it's been a little bit since we had an update from, from the chief. So maybe we could invite him. Just ask him to address the, the issues and give us a perspective on what the fire department can do. With, you know, the continued violations that, that we see when they, they turn up there.
That's a good idea. Yep.
And the other thing, you know, early on I talked about, you know, OSHA. And a lot of these violations are under our fire department, but they also fall under OSHA. And an OSHA inspection in that building, based on what I'm hearing, would be pretty extensive on the, on the laundry list of, uh, violations. But so I don't know if we could get ahold of them and see if they could put that on their agenda to stop in there and check that place out because, even our own fire department, you know, we have some limitations and on, on knowledge and on, on, you know, um, authority. But OSHA could go in there and. So could you look into that, Andy? Could you see if we can get them made aware of this?
And the nine one one, reverse nine one one, the email, is that realistic to push out?
Yeah, I, we reached out to D E P to get their confirmation of what they want us to share.
Gotcha.
And then once we know what they want us to share, we'll push it back out.
Okay.
I'll use the same map I did last time.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Jessie.
Thank you.
I made a bunch of notes. Anyone else? And this will be the last comment for tonight.
Hi, I'm Gabrielle McLean, three Lakeview Drive. Um, so, um, I've only made one complaint so far, but I've smelled this for a really long time and I just didn't even know for ages what I was smelling. And a lot of the neighbors don't. So I was walking one day and I saw this woman out doing her yard work and I was like, how's the smell been today? Because I'd been inside all day and I came out and I didn't smell anything at that moment. And she said, there's something dead in my yard and I've been looking all over for it. And I was like, oh no, really? Like she's like, yeah, there has to be something dead here. And I said, that's probably Feedback Earth. And she said, oh, I thought that was the bakery smell. And I was like, no. There are a lot of different smells coming from Feedback Earth and for us to try to decide when we should call and then have people, constantly gaslighting us and telling us that we're not smelling that, we're smelling the pond or smelling this. It's very frustrating and I feel like it's a lot to expect residents to be calling every day.
I know.
We have jobs, we have lives. And some people in this audience are working really, really hard and I appreciate it. Um, but I could have called hundreds of times. And at what point do I start to feel crazy? So anyway, that's all I want to say. I think I really appreciate all that you're doing, but when I read all the documents this week, um, that people were pulling from public records, I was just discouraged that it was like, oh, there weren't that many calls in this day, so it must be better. I think it's fatigue. I think we're tired of it and I don't think we should have to be responsible for telling you every day, when a smell comes. I appreciate the people who are, and I'm gonna try to do better by the way. But I, I really just want you guys to know that like two calls doesn't mean there's no smell.
Yep.
Anyway, thank you.
Yep, noted. Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna cut it off, um, at that this evening. Feel free to, you can always email the select board. Um, it comes to all of us if you have questions and concerns. Um, and I'm, I'm gonna keep it on as a, an agenda item.
You know, I'm, I'm kinda surprised that, you know, we talked about.
Come on up. Yep.
Bob Clark from Ten Flint Pond. I mean, we, we, we listened for.
You gotta do it in the mic first. We listened for thirty-five minutes, forty minutes about signs and things that, they're important, but this is really important. This is people's health. It's, and I realize you're doing stuff and I'm very happy to hear that. At least you are driving through there and I'm really hoping that you can really get a sense of how bad.
We all drive through there. Multiple times a week.
You can't even, you can't even drive down that street.
Yep.
And hold your breath long enough to try to escape it. It's crazy. I love the OSHA idea. It's a great idea. I think you should jump on that immediately to get somebody in there. But I, I think everyone here who came here to listen really should say what they need to say and not be cut off so quickly. That's all I have to say.
Yeah.
Cause this is really important to us.
Can I make a, can I respond to that real quick?
Yep.
Adam, sure. Fine. We have been. And it's on the agenda every week.
Okay.
And please come up.
I appreciate it.
I mean, I'll stay all night. That's cool. I'm with you. I agree with you. I'm sorry. I, I don't, I'm not, I don't have the authority to make that call.
Two hours to, to be here to listen to this.
Totally agree. You should know that, um, that this is on the agenda every week. We've gone to different meetings. We do all these different things that you don't see us do. Some much more than others.
Yep.
And, um, but I, I don't have the authority to say, actually, I said yes, but I don't have the authority to say yes.
Yeah.
But I'm with you. Say whatever you want.
Okay.
If, if it's okay with the rest of the board.
Been said, I, I was gonna address like the rats that are in that area. Now, I work late nights. I have a business in Worcester. And when I'm coming home at one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning and I'm passing through there for five seconds, I see five, six, seven, eight rats running across the street.
And we know about, so that has been discussed here, just so you know. The Russo Trucking gentlemen. So the first time that this was on the agenda, I did let everybody in the room come up that wanted to come up. And I don't know how long that went for, but it probably went for a long time. Yep, and that's okay. And then every subsequent meeting, we've had this on the agenda and not necessarily having as much public input, but, coming into this evening, there was a, an email or a Facebook email about this, right, inviting everyone to come. And so I came into this meeting thinking that there were gonna have two rooms full of people. And as the chair, I need to try to,
Right.
Keep this in the rails. As you see, we talked for a lot, a lot of time on a lot of things, right? And, and everything is important to someone else for some other reason. So we are definitely aware of the rats. I guess if there's anything new, that someone wants, we know about that. We know about the trash that's been on the road. We do have D P W going up there every day. So those things have been talked about in this room.
Okay.
Um, so if there's anything else new.
Yeah, I mean, even the businesses right in that area. I mean, they are struggling to.
So the first night, again, we had, um, Mr. McGill come from the, whatever that first one is, and then the Russo gentleman were, were in here as well.
Okay.
Um, so, yep.
All right.
Not trying to cut you off, but just definitely well with all of that.
I just want, I, if anyone has anything to say, I just want, I think they have the right to, to really say, even if it's, you know, just a couple of words.
Yep. Anyone else with something different? Okay. I also encourage everyone, our, all of our correspondence is available in our packets every week, every week that we meet. So anything that people have written in, um, responses from the board to those things, it's always available. If you go on to the website, go under like agendas and minutes, go to select board. And then at each of our meetings, you'll see a packet that will have all that correspondence. So all the things that we see each week, multiple, multiple letters, rebuttals, et cetera, um, we, we see all that as well. And you have access to it.
Hi, Leanne Gagnon, seventeen Mipplewood Drive. I just, um, I had something to say about the TIF committee. And I know, Andy, you kind of addressed this online, but how it's supposed to be neutral. And I think that that needs to be looked into because this was clearly not neutral and it was presented at town meeting as great people, great business. And I know, you know, we get encouraged to participate in town, town meeting, go to town meeting. And honestly, so disappointed. Because I came with facts and I was shot down with false information and that's wrong. And it's upsetting to me that I wanna get involved in town events and then something like that happens and, you know, I don't like talking to people. I hate it. I, I got up there, I tried to sound the alarms, blow the whistle and I was shot down. And I don't think that's right. I think the committee needs to be looked at to make it understood that you're neutral and you're not promoting a business in front of the whole town when we're trying to vote. Thank you.
Fair. Okay, anyone else? All right. Thank you. I appreciate it and, uh, we will continue. Sure. Okay, select board reports.
Madam Chair.
Uh, Matt?
Um, yeah, a couple of things. Um, I think you and Andy were both at the Gold Star Mothers, uh, event, at the municipal center here on Sunday. Um, I thought that was terrific, um, really good event. So I look forward to, uh, seeing that sort of, I think that was the first one. So I've seen that grow year after year. I really, I really enjoyed that. It was nice, um, having an opportunity to, to hang out with some of the families. And, uh, and, you know, get out, um, yeah, to, to just, uh, recognize, um, that, uh, you know, military service is a, it's a family affair. It's not just the people that are directly serving. It's their families that have to also sacrifice in a lot of cases. So, um, I really enjoyed that. Uh, Craig and I met with, uh, Evan yesterday, um, and town council. So I think we're, um, pretty well positioned for, uh, a discussion as a board, um, with regards to seventeen twenty seven Upton and, and how we want to proceed. Sat in on the, uh, on Zoom, um, on the water district meeting last night. Um, I'll let Andy talk about that a little bit. The sound was terrible on, on Zoom, which was really unfortunate. Um, so we could only sort of get some of it. It was, it was definitely wacky and, uh, there was just sections that you just couldn't hear at all. So, hopefully, you know, in future forums like that. I, I thought they did a really good job. They were very candid and open. They weren't defensive at all. They just presented the information. I thought it was pretty clear and, um, definitely good informational session, but, um, I think that's it for me.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Anyone else? Andy?
Yeah, um, thank you. Um, I think the Zoom component was, was a newer thing for them. It, it, from what I could see, it looked like they had one centrally placed mic for the entire, uh, panel of them. Um, you know, so again, you, you weren't really catching public comment or anything at that point. Um, but I did appreciate the effort. There were far more people on Zoom, um, than there were in person. It was, it was a little surprising, uh, to get there and see so few people in person, but, um, attempting to recap some of this quickly because I, I do think it is important information. For one and for two, some of it will be discussed at the upcoming commissioners meeting, um, on the seventh. So, uh, it could incentivize people to go there and, and, um, share opinions. They gave, uh, as Matt mentioned, a great explanation to the issues. There were also a couple of handouts that were, uh, available that, that went through, uh, some of the various reasons that we've, we've had these issues and, uh, timeline of complaints and reporting, uh, as well as projections for when they think, uh, treat, uh, PFAS treatment facilities will be available for each of our wells. Um, the handouts that they had available last night should be available on their website shortly. I believe the Zoom recording for what it's worth will also be available. You know, there, again, uh, even though I'm trying to recap as best as possible, they are still your best resource for questions. Uh, it seemed that a lot of the recent issues come down to the Worcester Street well. Uh, the D E P gave them new chlorination guidelines. Chlorine naturally oxidizes with manganese and falls out into a brown powder or silt. So the increased chlorine levels that D E P dictated for the Worcester Street well caused an increase in a manganese issue that hadn't been occurring, at the lower chlorine level. Uh, it was also compounded because, uh, they were required to do capacity testing, for the upcoming PFAS requirements on the same wellhead. So it pushed even more of that water out into the system. Uh, while the new chlorine levels will remain, uh, and, and unfortunately do bring with that some of the manganese issue. Um, the volume of water, the testing is, has ended and the volume of water will return back to normal. So, um, that should, minimize some of the disruption in the pipes. They've also reached out to the D E P, uh, for permission to draw more daily water from the Falette Street well, uh, which doesn't suffer from the iron and manganese issues. As I mentioned, uh, the changes in pressure can be, uh, a large issue, whereas they were forcing a lot of water through from the water, uh, the Worcester Street well. Um, it pulls a lot of that, you know, kind of debris and impurities off the wall of the older steel pipe that runs through town. You know, just kind of further exacerbates the issue. Anyone who may not be aware, when they, when they go through the process of flushing, the hydrants that starts at the wellheads and moves out in a, a radial fashion from there, drawing the clean water out into the other areas of town. One of the things they discussed was it's a massive increase in seasonal, uh, usage. They average four point two million gallons of daily use during non-summer months and that jumps to eight gallons, uh, of daily, eight million gallons of daily use over the summer, uh, which could lead to, they'll be discussing things like water bans to lower the draw, uh, and lead, uh, less disruption to the overall system. Um, that in particular will be discussed at their, at their upcoming meeting, um, on the ninth. Um, there was some, also some questions about the feasibility tying into Worcester, Worcester's water system or some of the surrounding areas. Um, which is, the district will be doing, uh, cost analysis, but, uh, felt like those were gonna be, uh, increasing prohibitive. They did reiterate, uh, that is, it is important for residents to continue to contract, contact the district when they have an issue. Please do not assume that they know that there is an issue in your area. They rely on your input to clean these things up. Um, and you can also, they encourage residents to reach out to the D E P, um, because that can help in, in their case to, um, increase the amount of daily water drawn from Falette, which will in turn help resolve this issue. So, lot there, but, uh, you know, it just unfortunately seemed to be a, a couple of, circumstances that weren't necessarily in the water districts, districts' control that they, um, are trying to be better about now. I mentioned, uh, I felt like the communication could have been quicker on their end, uh, if it had come out even say two weeks sooner. Um, you know, residents are much more palatable to that information when they know why is hap, the issue's happening and, and when, that issue will come to an end. Um, so, uh, they seemed receptive to that. Um, again, you, uh, even I think in terms of infrastructure, like computer stuff, they're, they're working with some older equipment. So, you know, the, the, the website is, is very old and dated. Um, I think the, the Zoom capability suffered a little bit from that last night. Uh, but like they were, they were. Honest upfront, it was a lot of great information passed along. I can't wait, uh, for them to get those sheets on the website so that. Um, some of us can begin to to share that information out. I think residents will find it useful. Apologize for being long-winded on that, but that's what I got.
Anything else? Anyone else? Matt and Mark, sorry.
Oh, thank you. I went to the, um, cable oversight meeting. I think some of us were on Zoom.
Mm-hmm.
And I think I left that thinking we should probably talk about maybe looking at revising it, refreshing it, having a deeper conversation about that committee. As it is and maybe what it could be.
Okay. Um. Eddie, Craig, no?
Uh, I went to a variety of meetings as usual, uh, but I also, uh, met with someone from the Water District and toured the two plants and. You know, got some information, um, and again, for me, it kind of boiled down to just, uh, PFAS. Kind of mitigation trial and then kind of things that happened down the the line. I think that, you know, they're they're working, for me, the biggest thing is that they're actually doing some marketing work now. Um, you know, Matt is on that Facebook group and responding to things. They had the meeting. Um. And they're pushing out information, so I think that'll be helpful for people. Um, and I had, went to the master plan meeting last evening. Our next meeting is scheduled for November sixth, six thirty. Last evening, we were discussing the housing and the land use chapters, so kind of just plowing through those chapters. And that's all I've got.
Um, TA report?
Um, I don't really have one for this evening, um, aside from the Millbury Street sidewalk project has started. So you'll start to see some progress out there if you go that way.
Yep, I noticed it.
I see it.
Slow down.
Every day.
It's insane. Um, okay.
Just one, just one thing on that. We had talked about that, the school, the driveway.
The apron.
Are they gonna, the, well, the, that, the first driveway as you're heading towards Millbury, they're at the curb there, there's.
Yep.
An area that needs to be repaired.
I did mention that I'll follow up to make sure that it's on the right.
Yeah, it'd be good if they were out there, they could do it while they're there.
I'll I'll double check.
Okay.
Cause it's been a while since I think we talked about it, so.
Um, okay, anyone have anything they want to talk about correspondence? Um, we have two resignations, so.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Alamo.
I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of June Whitney as an election worker.
Second.
Motion made seconded and discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. And then we have one more for the master.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Alamo.
I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Susan DeValle from the Master Plan Working Group.
Second.
Motion made seconded and any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, um, five zero. And any more public comments? Cleared out the room.
Trying much for.
The souls of mine.
Nope.
I'll take a motion relative to meeting minutes.
I will, I'll offer that motion. I move the board vote to approve the meeting minutes for March twenty sixth of Ju- and June eighteen of twenty nineteen as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded and any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, and I will, um, entertain a motion to move into executive session. Do you have that on your agenda or no? Or I just moved that we've.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, roll call. Uh, Mr. Alamo?
Alamo, aye.
Duffin, aye.
Foley, aye.
Jackson, aye.
Duffin, aye.
Okay, and we are in, moving into executive session, so, good night.
Good night, Brian.
We will just return to, um, adjourn the meeting.